And Jennifer Huber from Broses Johnson and Griggs. Roll.
We'll call Mr. Bernert.
Present.
Mr. Carter.
Present.
Mr. Lef.
Here.
Ms. Walsh.
Present.
Mr. Welch.
Here.
And I'll note, Mr. Sears is here as well.
Great. Statement of policy, this meeting may be recorded. Such recordings are public record, may be posted online, and could be subject to review in court. As is the adopted policy of the zoning commission, all applicants will be granted an opportunity to make their formal presentation. The audience may be then granted an opportunity to comment followed by the applicant's response and questions from the commission. The chairperson may limit repetitive debate and reserves the right for following rights. To limit comment to items on the agenda, to limit public comment to five minutes per person, to restrict the number of times a member of the public is permitted to speak, and to enact any other reasonable ad hoc protocols or measures necessary to maintain a fair, safe, and orderly meeting. This policy was adopted by the commission to provide for the respectful, constructive, and efficient discussion of business scheduled for the consideration and to allow for proper due process as required by law. First item up for night is the meeting minutes from January seventeenth.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three minutes as presented.
A second motion.
Any discussion, comments, changes? Good. Roll.
We'll call Mr. Bernert.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Lef.
Yes. Motion passes. Alright, time is now seven oh two. Daniel Bino requesting approval of a rezoning and preliminary development plan to convert and expand an existing residence for commercial use on approximately one point two zero nine acres at six four six three Max Town Road, Westerville, Ohio, four three zero eight two. P I N number three one seven three four one zero five zero zero two zero zero zero. Currently zoned rural residential R R, seeking rezoning to Plan Commercial District P C D, also known as multi-sound studios. Zoning case number twenty twenty-two dash oh seven, this is the continued meeting from December twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Anybody speaking on behalf of this, please rise this evening if you're going to speak at all to this hearing. Raise your right hand. Do you serve to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Be seated. The following exhibits were either updated or added, A through J's, on top of A through J's. So Exhibit F, the fire marshal letter dated February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Exhibit G, the staff technical review dated February eighth, twenty twenty-three, for February five fifteen, twenty twenty-three. Exhibit H, staff memo dated February eight, twenty twenty-three, for February fifteen, twenty twenty-three. Exhibit I, all public comments received between November fourth, twenty twenty-two, and February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. And Exhibit J, revised application and plans which were received on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Schaefer, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As this is a continued application, as per my usual sort of protocol here, I'm only going to focus on the highlighted changes of the memorandum I've provided to you so we don't have to go all back to square one. So I'm just going to jump right in and go through the highlights as they appear in the memorandum. So the acreage of the development has been corrected. It turns out Westerville is asking for additional right-of-way to be acquired by the city. I'm assuming via the annexation process along the frontage, so that'll cut a little bit further into the site. So the acreage of the site is, the gross acreage was one point two zero six acres. After the right-of-way dedication, it'll be down to one point one eight one. And the applicant has revised all their site calculations to reflect the change in the acreage. They've also provided some additional information regarding the rehearsal studio itself. It consists of ten studio spaces with a potential expansion, increasing that figure to twenty-five individual studio spaces. The parking lot now, proposed parking lot now consists of seven spaces. They are also reserving as part of that phase two sort of expansion we've talked about that could be increased to possibly seventeen spaces should that second phase happen. A divergence relative to the number of parking spaces provided is being requested. I'll get into that request in just a moment. Plan drawing A dash I N F notes that the proposed impervious surface coverage of the site is fifty-six percent as this differs from the, I'm sorry, I don't know what happened there with the, must be a typo. The number listed in the general project information table on drawing A dash I N F, staff assumes the former reflects build-out while the latter reflects, seems to reflect the initial phase. However, the applicant should confirm or correct this information where if needed. I'm sure they can speak to that this evening. Now regarding access and traffic, the proposed driveway onto the J C Manny property has been moved to a location that seems to look and function much better and more efficiently than the previous design that we had seen. If you recall, you can see in the image on the right, the driveway sort of has that L shape and goes to the east and connects into that parking lot there that J C Manny is going to be building as part of their project. That driveway initially was much further south, almost practically right on top of Max Town Road, and staff had a concern about its proximity to Max Town Road and asked the applicant to take a look into that and consult with Westerville and the Fire Department. Clearly, those other parties agreed, so it's been moved further back north into the location that I feel like is a lot more logical. Now you've got sort of that four-way plus sign sort of design going on through there. The applicant's response to comments dated January thirteen, twenty twenty-three indicates this design is acceptable to Westerville, as I noted, and they are working on obtaining the needed legal agreement with all parties to make it possible. The parties being the city and the adjacent property, J C Manny. The Fire Department did have some concerns about the design specifically regarding turning radiuses for the ladder truck, and they reached out to the city. Westerville engineer provided them the specs for the ladder truck. Westerville ran it through the turning template program that they have in their office and have verified that the truck will be able to make the turn. So as such, today, we got, the Fire Marshal issued a letter. I apologize, I didn't get a chance to forward it to you, but they have no concerns with the design at this time. I've also talked to Marshal Cato a couple of times on this, and I think he's satisfied with where things stand, at least from a fundamental fire service standpoint regarding this proposal. The applicant should demonstrate that all necessary approvals and agreements are in place at the time of final development plan submission. So obviously, we would want to see that Westerville is gonna, that all those agreements are in place with the adjacent property owner, and the city has signed off on them to make sure that they can build actually what they want to build. But since this is just a rezoning, I don't think that's something we necessarily need now. I think we've seen enough and have heard enough probably to demonstrate that fundamentally speaking, it can work, that the city is principally in agreement with the layout. And now it's just a matter of probably getting that agreement on paper and dotting i's and crossing t's. And obviously, we know if they can't do that, they're not going to be able to do the project, so it's going to be somewhat self-regulating. We do now have a letter from the Natural Gas Company certifying service is available there. There were some questions regarding the landscaping, what treatments were being used where during the last hearing, so I'm just going to go through that real quick. A five-and-a-half-foot tall brick wall is being proposed along the northern property line, as well as along the northern ends of the eastern and western property lines to screen the development from adjacent properties. The balance of the eastern and western lot lines will contain a six-foot tall fence to provide additional screening to neighboring properties. The applicant will need to revise the plan so that the fence is not located within twenty feet of the proposed Max Town Road right-of-way. The reason being that any fence that's within twenty feet of the right-of-way, we have a thirty-six-inch height limit due to site distance concerns. Approximately eighteen of the fifty-six trees would ultimately be removed for the site to construct the improvements and/or due to being already dead. Regarding lighting, I did add a note that they have a light along the northern side of the proposed driveway. It basically just got shifted when they moved the driveway. There always was sort of a light down along that driveway, but when they shifted the driveway, they shifted the light to accommodate that. And I actually like it because it's, it used to be down more towards that sort of elbow bend, and now it's a little bit closer to the east on that intersection where I think you're going to see a lot more conflicting vehicle maneuvers through that intersection. So it's probably good we have additional lighting there. I did note that the applicant at the last meeting had not really provided any information pertaining to signage. I've updated that verbiage here in the memo to state that the applicant has opted to defer proposing signage, if any is desired, into the final development plan application. I have no concerns with that. That seems like a more final detail anyway. I don't think whether or not, what signage they want is going to change whether or not fundamentally the site functions or works. We've done that for other applications as well. We'll just have to know that if they come back with a signage plan that requires a divergence, we'll have to deal with those at the time of final. And again, not atypical, we've done that before. Regarding the divergence requests, I've already gone through the previously requested divergences, so the additional, and those remain. So the additional divergence being requested is, as I previously noted, divergence from section nineteen oh four dot eighteen, which requires a parking ratio of one space for every two hundred feet of floor area. The applicant is proposing to reduce that required ratio to one space for every five hundred square feet of floor area. Staff comments remain unchanged from the last hearing. Jumping into the technical review document, you can see a lot of my comments have been sufficiently addressed. So that's always nice to see. Comments twelve through twenty-one are all just the boilerplate sort of procedural administrative comments. There wasn't any action they actually needed to take on those. It's all just sort of informational. Divergence review section was updated to add the divergence I just read through. I did have one comment regarding that divergence, and it was that they needed to provide justifications in accordance with section twenty-seven oh seven, which is the township's divergence review standards. I always like to get the applicant's response to those standards so they can get them on the record for the commission's official consideration. I do know the applicant has written those up and is prepared to at least speak to those items this evening. I don't know if they have copies for you, but they'll be able to speak to those divergence review standards this evening. We had that conversation earlier today. Signage review, like I said, that comment got crossed off because we're not proposing any, or they are not proposing any signage right now. There's no action that needs to be taken to address the engineering review. Again, it's sort of just a standard comment. And the traffic comments, I've already talked about, the agreements are still in the works regarding the driveway and the Max Town Road access. So that's comments essentially two and three, and really, four. Staff has no concerns that the actual right-of-way dedication may have not have happened yet. I just wanted to make sure if it was going to happen, they accounted for it on the drawings. So again, we could get that acreage and the setback lines and all the calculations revised to reflect that, which they have done. And so with that, believe it or not, that concludes my report, so I'm going to turn over back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Mr. Bino, turn your mic on, please. And if you guys could both say your name and address, that would be great.
Daniel Bino, six four six three Max Town Road, Westerville.
Jason McGee, the designer for the project at eight hundred Cross Point in Gehanna is the office address. I'm also a resident of Westerville, three eight nine Electric Avenue. Yeah, so I think the primary thing we wanted to speak to was the parking divergence request. So I talked with Mr. Bino after the previous meeting. He said that at his current rehearsal studio space, he sees an occupancy of approximately twenty percent of the rooms, or he sees his rehearsal spaces are occupied, a maximum of twenty percent of his rooms at any given time. So we use that ratio and deduce that if he has ten rooms in the existing structure, which is sort of the first phase, then we could expect to have two of the rehearsal rooms occupied, so, which is why we got to seven units for the parking. So that puts, if two rooms are occupied at seven spaces, we divide that by two. So we've got three and a half parking spaces per room based on the anticipated occupancy. If that bumps up to fifteen rooms, then I've got additional space for ten more parking spaces. So that breaks down to three point four cars for each occupied room. So I know that that was, one of the comments in the last meeting was how many, you know, we could see more, like a band coming and having more than one person per room. So based on twenty percent occupancy, we've got a little over three parking spaces per room. So I think that was the first thing we wanted to speak to, or the major piece we wanted to speak to. And we also wanted to speak to the access drive. Mr. Bino has been working with City of Westerville to get that approved. He's been working with his lawyer to get that approved with the adjacent property. And based on everything that we've got from Westerville and everything that's written in the deed agreement, we've tried to adhere to that agreement, and so he's doing everything in his power to make that drive satisfactory for everybody. It's a matter of getting those things approved for the final, you know, the final plan. So I think we know it works, we've got verbal confirmation, it's a matter of getting the legalities worked out.
Excuse me, I'd like to add that, you know, we've been in dialogue with the City of Westerville for, I want to say about like three months now. And I guess at this point, we've done anything that we could to present to them what we're looking to achieve, obviously with, which you know, presenting to them the timeline that we have, including today's meeting. I guess there is no rush to do that for whatever reason, but that's nothing that we can do to expedite it. We just have to wait for them to do that. We know that there's no issue, it's just a matter of them approving it, and for some reason, I guess, it takes a little while there.
I know another concern at the last meeting we were at was the screening at the back of the property adjacent to the residential spaces. So we've added additional plantings to help screen that. The residences facing, you know, where lights would be coming from cars parking. So we've added additional vegetation. The wall that is next to those properties is a brick wall. Mr. Bino wanted it to be more aesthetic than a simple wood fence. So he's proposing a brick wall that is six feet in height back there. So we've increased the height of that fence and added vegetation in response to the comments that we received in the last meeting. And I believe I don't have any further comments.
Yeah, so pretty much, those are the two items that were, I requested to present for this meeting, if I'm not mistaken. It's the driveway and, was it the parking divergence?
I will note that I did get a voicemail today from the City of Westerville, just they wanted to know sort of where things were at in the process. So perhaps they were trying to understand what your timeline was. Unfortunately, when I called back, I had to leave a voicemail, and we played phone tag, and we weren't able to actually talk to one another. So, but, so it is on the city's radar, I can tell you that.
I think that's all we have.
Any public comment? Public comment is closed. Commission. Where in the document did you put, change to six foot? Because we just said five and a half.
I read six foot on here, but Joe said five and a half.
Joe said five and a half.
Perhaps I misquoted or misread it.
I know, and like, in my coded note on A S two, coded note twelve points at the fence. Oh, yes. Yeah, coded notes. I've not proposed it, no. What kind of, what sewer modifications would we be doing? No.
Yeah, they're going to do septic on this. Yeah, they'll have to get final engineering from Delaware County. Oh, in terms of like how they make the site, storm mark, yeah, that could, that's possible. And that's, usually we ask the applicant to have those conversations, at least the preliminary engineering conversations, after the rezoning is approved, if it's approved, so that way, if they know they've got to do anything major like that, that they get that on the final plans.
No, but there was also comments in the last meeting about shadowing if we were adding stories onto the additional house in the third story. So I included the shadows study to show where shadows would lay at the extremes of the year. At the moment, but, you know, understand that we will be required to submit those things and have it with a lighting desire. I tried to use my best judgment, and, I mean, we would like to use as few lights as possible, but understand that there's going to be some spillover that we want to make sure does not occur, or designed so that we do not have spillover to the residences.
So like, do they need to have diversions for the sewer? Since in the P C D it says like, if you look, the district is limited to areas served by central sewer wastewater treatment plants operated by the Delaware County sanitary engineer. It's like section twelve oh one to top. I'm just wondering if that needs to be requested or not.
Trying to remember, I don't think we treated J C Manny in that manner, because I thought we determined as we were reading it that. It says, or, yeah, twelve oh one oh two, or developments utilizing other sewage treatment options approved in the development plan, which is pretty open-ended, so. And really, we have no say in the matter, and I think that's how we basically have viewed it, is if the county says it's okay, then we have to say it's okay.
So you say for the parking situation, you say, is this all the time, or is it an average, this twenty percent of occupancy?
Based on what we have in the city, we have fifty parking, well, fifty units. There are hardly any, any time where we have like, it doesn't even get to seven vehicles that are parked at the same, at the same.
Most people like, come there together, like, does that?
Yeah, they usually get there together, they'll, you know, if it's a band, if it's a production suite, then, you know, we talk about two people, so it's even less. And the one thing to take from this also is that usually band rehearses like maybe once or twice, at best. At the most, three times a week, and they will be there. It's usually different time schedule, so, from doing this for over twenty-two years now.
Is this something you guys are going to plan that these people not overlap, or, I mean, otherwise, there could be a scenario that there's, that you need double the amount of spaces, and what do you do then? You cannot park on the street there.
Right, right, absolutely, you know, I mean, like, if, that's what I was also brought to Jason, we spoke about it earlier. I just go back by what we have in New York, which is pretty busy. I would say, hopefully, this will be busier, but, and the amount of rooms over there are almost triple. We have to have, at least for stage one. And so based on what we have, that's the only projection that I can have. And I can't imagine that we'll, with ten rooms, ever get to five concurrent full lot of, full occupancy as far as vehicles are concerned.
On the timeline, like, the second building, or, well, there's not much, there's just like an outline, and so you don't really know what it's going to look like. But what, like, what the timeline wise, what are you thinking, when would this be built, like, a year after? Like, what's your?
The second building? Like I'm what, if we get this launched in flying colors and we get the occupancy, we expect the amount of rooms rented? Then if, if that happens within a year of us starting the business and finishing up the building itself and presenting it to our clients, if we get an overwhelming response and within a year's time we get like full occupancy, then, yeah, I would say. But usually, again, just based on experience, these things do take time, and I, realistically, I wouldn't expect to go into the second phase anywhere between, from the day that we start, that we launch the business, between two to three years.
So if we, this is a question for Joe, but if we like, give the go-ahead for this project, how long, is there like a timeline for them to like build this building, or?
The rezoning would be permanent, just the rezoning from the residential commercial would be permanent. But obviously, we'll have a step two of this process, should this rezoning hearing be successful for them. And the final development plan, if that's approved, I believe it's three years from the date of approval, that they would at least have to pull a zoning permit. There is a little bit of question, what would that zoning permit look like in terms of, do they apply for everything all at once, or do they phase that? And there are other deadlines in the code about how long the zoning permit's good for and what authority I have to extend some of those permits. So looking a little further out, it's a little gray, and I probably can't totally answer the question of what that would look like, because there, I think there's some unknown variables that would come into play in terms of how that would look. We've had projects that have been multi-phase projects that have come in and gotten a permit before my time for all of the phases. It's generally not my preferred track, especially if it's something that's going to go over a period of years. So I'm hoping that at the time they would come back for final, if they get that far, maybe they'd have a better idea or be able to draft something up of what their timeline is, so we can lock that down a little bit more, so there's a little more predictability for all parties involved.
Then, did you have, like, did you communicate with the other neighbor who, or the second building would be next to it? Like, are they aware that, I mean, this is a three-story building, that's quite a massive block, is it going to be there? Did you communicate this? Did you have contact about this?
With the neighbors that, north to us, we have, with Mr. Hassy, we have.
I mean, I mean, the ones immediately next to it.
You're talking about next to the forty-five-hundred-square-foot building?
Yes.
The addition.
Yeah, the addition, next to the addition.
Okay, yeah, so the question is.
He wants to know if you've talked to Mr. Hassy about the potential of another building.
Yeah, we ran that by both Mr. Hassy and Ms. Manny. And also, we introduced ourselves to our neighbors to the north, fit there, and we shared, or hopefully, we'll be able to launch here.
On that same thing, if, maybe you've answered this, but on the forty-five-hundred extension, if we approved it today, they would have to come back to township on the design and everything?
Yeah, they'll have to come back for final regardless, even on the phase one of the project.
Right, but even after the final development was planned and they did all this, and then if they want to build that forty-five-square-foot addition, do they have, who do they come back to in the township for that?
It depends on how they would present it at final. If they include it as part of the final development plan application and that gets approved, then it would just be handled administratively by staff. If they decide, for whatever reason, even though we talked about it at rezoning, we're not going to include it on our final plan application and only get phase one approved, I would tell them, they would have to come back later, amend the final development plan and show you phase two. So it's sort of up to them what route they ultimately want to take for their business.
I don't know if you can answer this, what would you recommend for them to do?
I think, I think if they think it's going to be built within three years of their final approval, might as well show it on the final development plan that they're going to have to submit for this. If they think it's possibly longer than that, it's a little murkier, like I said, because there's other code provisions that come into play and some unknown variables. I don't know, honestly.
So, okay, and sorry for this, but if they came back later, if it isn't in the plan, they came back later for the forty-five-hundred-foot square extension, would they come to you for that, and then what would be the approval process there?
They would just pull a zoning permit for it.
Just a zoning.
Yeah, just like they would for the phase one.
So my, I feel like it's whether we approve it now or later, it doesn't really matter. I get that feeling, I know why you.
Correct, yeah, especially as part of the rezoning, because this, they're just putting it on there to be forthright with you, that they fully intend to do something out there. It's sort of like, think of it as sort of like a master plan type of document on the rezoning, but whether or not they decide they want to go forward with it now or later, that's sort of a business decision for them.
Okay, thank you. On the lighting, is that, everybody have to have downcast lighting now, that doesn't show? Okay, that's what you're going to have, great. Seven parking spaces versus seventeen parking spaces. You have the space to add the other ten if you need to, right?
In the front, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, let's say you did run over, and Joe got, you know, complaints, people with the parking and J company and all this stuff and walking over, that you guys would work with just adding the spaces, wouldn't be that hard to do?
That is correct, Mr. Carter.
Okay, would that have to be included in this plan?
Yeah, so it's sort of the same theory, if they include it on the final development plan, then I could write a zoning permit for it. That, they could actually do the parking lot expansion but not have to do the building expansion. I wouldn't require them both to happen at the same time. If they said, hey, phase one's doing really well, but we would like to go ahead and build that parking, and it's already approved on the final development plan, I could issue a permit for that.
So that is in this, they are asking for that.
Yeah, that's the little hatched-out area.
Part of the whole thing, okay. Did we receive any correspondence from adjacent neighbors? Did we receive any correspondence from adjacent neighbors on this?
Uh, no, I don't recall receiving anything, I don't think I've spoken to Mr. Hassy or the tenant on that property at all. They would have gotten notification of it, and probably seen the sign. I don't, I'm trying to think, I know I talked to Pat Mandrell about something, but I don't think it was about this. I think it was something else relative to her project.
I was thinking about public comment last time.
Mm-hmm.
You may have covered this, but with the traffic study, you know, it's not ours to do, it's not, there's, you know, it's Westerville's to do, but I never saw anything back from Westerville. Was that what you were talking about with your phone tag?
Um, no, I was primarily talking about the rights for them to access Max Town Road, like getting the driveway permit, or essentially, the driveway permit via J.C. Manny, and the ability to utilize that easement that J.C. Manny put in place with, in conjunction with Westerville to make this configuration.
But does Westerville still have to come back and say whether or not they want a traffic study? Because, reading those things, I thought that was required.
Um, they've emailed us, we've asked for confirmation, I have an email from Westerville and the development tech saying that, or confirming that they're not going to require that.
Okay.
Yeah, and the way our code reads, it says if Delaware County requires it, we'll require it, but it's sort of a loophole a little bit.
Well, I read those letters, and it seemed like the City of Westerville thing, that could be included in whatever, if you have that memo, just give it to Joe. That's all I've got.
This is really a question for you.
All right.
Diversions of 1203, for the visual and mechanical barrier for the distances. If we grant the divergence for that, does that exclude every bit of that from mechanical? I understand that the meaning of it is the distance, because of how tight the property line is, but, the way it's worded to me right now, it says that now I'm negating all mechanical screening beyond what was being proposed from a fence perspective. So, if we come back from a final development perspective, and we look at lighting, and we look at sightlines, and we look at something else, and we say, hey, I want some other screening for the neighbors, have we now excluded it at this point?
Yeah, it's possibly, it could be read that way, so if the commission is interested, if the applicant is interested in, you know, acknowledging that concern, and possibly working with the commission to document something that they've, as part of a, you know, I don't wanna say condition necessarily, but as part of that divergence request, to make it more clear that it's specific to those items, that's certainly something you could do, and probably even something you can include as just a clarification, if you were to make a motion this evening as part of a clarification, and you could instruct the applicant to submit to me updated materials post-vote. We also know that anything that comes out of the commission is, still has to go to the board, so a lot of times, if there are outstanding changes that need to be made, the applicants do a pretty good job of getting that stuff put in for the board iteration.
And at the same time, just, this is preliminary, it's granting divergence at this point, and it's not fully granting it at a final development plan perspective.
I'm sorry, what was that?
We're granting it, if we pass this and go, it's granting the divergence at the preliminary stage, it would still have to be a divergence requested in the final?
No, usually, once we grant as part of the rezoning, I consider it, it's done, they don't have to re-ask for it at final, because at some point, Jennifer's gonna pinch me if I'm wrong, but I feel like it's sort of a vested, like, now you've told them, you can move ahead with spending all this money on final engineering, and like, it feels like you're pulling out the rug from underneath them, if you're like, oh, but, we might not be okay with that divergence the second time you ask it, so it's like double jeopardy kind of thing.
It's one of those things I just want on the record.
Yep, exactly.
Yeah, that, I, I would like to have some sort of clarification in that. So, what is your feeling about what I just said?
No, yeah, totally, I wrote it with the spirit of, you know, the site's tight, we're doing everything we can to accommodate this.
Okay.
I'm not a lawyer by any means, so, you know, if there's clarification needed, then there's no problem with that.
So at this point, the divergence, you're understanding, is that we're, we would be granting divergence from the distance requirements?
Right, right.
We are not excluding any screening requirements?
Correct, correct.
You understand that too?
Yeah.
Okay. And, just from, from my point of view, when we get to final development, if we pass this, we need the entire zoning resolution, the way it's written, we need to print all that out, and then all of your responses, just putting 1203 dot whatever, we agree to this, doesn't work. We need the full wording, so we know which version you were held to when we do the development plans. Okay?
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Good directive.
Wish to, anybody wanna do divergence?
Divergence review?
Divergence review?
Sure. Mr. Chair, per section 2707.07, unless a deviation from development standards is specifically approved as a divergence, the same shall be complied with. Number one, divergence from section 1203.01, to allow for a parcel of less than five acres to be zoned, a planned commercial district, PCD. Number two, a divergence from section 1203.03A, to allow for reduced, for a reduced green space buffer of 63 feet in the rear or the north portion of the lot, six feet on the side, the west side, six feet from the adjacent PCD parcel, and 75 feet from the adjacent residential parcels in the side east, and 25 feet on the front of the lot or the south of the lot. Number three, a divergence from section 1203.03B, as in Boyd, to remove the visual or mechanical barrier, 75 feet from the property line for a six-foot tall wall and fence on the property line. Number four, a divergence from section 1208.01, to allow for a reduced building separation to 78 feet, three inches, to the rear or the north, eight feet to the side, to the west side, eight feet to the adjacent PCD parcel, and 85 feet to the adjacent residential parcels to the side east, and 100 feet to the front proposed right-of-way line. Number five, a divergence from section 1904.18, to reduce the required parking ratio to one space for every 500 square feet of floor area. And I would propose that these divergences promote or do not have an adverse impact on the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the present and future inhabitants of Genoa Township, the quality of life within Genoa Township through the protection of the total environment, the preservation of nuisances and hazards, and the provision of adequate light, air, and convenient access to property, the assurance of the compatibility of land uses which are either adjacent or in proximity to each other, the orderly development of all lands within the township, and it's, to its appropriate use, and finally, the most appropriate use of land to facilitate and provide adequate public and private improvements.
Any discussion on any of those items?
No.
Divergence respective?
Second?
Was there a motion yet?
Yeah, I got that. Mr. Chairman, I, one point of clarification, we had had that just discussion about the divergences and them applying going forward. I just wanted to clarify, if the final plans were to come in, and for whatever reason, they would need to modify the plan in a way that wasn't consistent with one of the divergences that was granted, we would ask at that point that they re-request the divergence, the modified version of the divergence. So, again, just for the sake of clarity, that, there is one possibility where they would have to re-ask.
There's always final engineering, which changes things, so.
Yes, it does.
Okay. All right. You guys have any other questions before we make a motion here?
No.
All right, you wanna make a motion? You want us to make a motion?
Yes, please.
Please.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move to recommend approval of the following to the Genoa Township Board of Trustees, the subject zoning map amendment, also known as rezoning application, including all plans and materials submitted by Daniel Bino to rezone approximately 1.206 acres of property located at 6463 Max Town Road, Westerville, Ohio 43082, parcel number 317-341-0500-2000, from rural residential to planned commercial district, also known as multi-sound studios, zoning commission case number 2022-07, incorporating exhibits A through J. This motion to recommend approval of the subject zoning map amendment, or rezoning application, is based on the following findings of fact and conclusions. Said amendment is found to be consistent with the Genoa Township comprehensive plan pursuant to section 108 of the Genoa Township zoning resolution, and I further move to recommend approval of the following divergences from the Genoa Township zoning resolution. Number one, divergence from section 1203.01, to allow a rezoning to planned commercial district or PCD on a lot of approximately 1.206 acres, as further detailed in exhibit J.
Second?
Second motion.
Any discussion? Mr. Schaefer?
Roll call, Mr. Benner.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Leff.
Yes, motion passes, thank you.
So, I would then move, Mr. Chair, to recommend approval of the following to the Genoa Township Board of Trustees, namely, the preliminary development plan incorporated within the subject zoning map amendment, or rezoning application, including all plans and materials submitted by Mr. Daniel Bino to convert and expand an existing residence for commercial use on approximately 1.206 acres of property located at 6463 Max Town Road, Westerville, Ohio 43082, parcel number 317-341-0500-2000, now zoned planned commercial district, also known as multi-sound studios, zoning commission case number 2022-07, incorporating exhibits A through J, and any, excuse me, any commitments made by the applicant during this hearing.
I think we need to just throw in there the point on the divergence of just the distance and not the potential for screening.
And so, one of the commitments from the applicant was that the divergence for distance only applies to distance and not specifically to screening, that will be developed later. I further move to recommend approval of the following divergences from the Genoa Township zoning resolution, as further detailed in exhibit J. Number one, divergence from section 1203.01, to allow a rezoning to planned commercial district on a lot of approximately 1.206 acres. Number two, divergence from section 1203.03A, to allow for a reduced green space buffer of 63 feet in the rear or north of the property, six feet to the west side, six feet from the adjacent PCD parcel on the east side, and 75 feet from the adjacent residential parcels on the east side, and 25 feet on the south portion of the lot or the front. Number three, a divergence from section 1203.03B, to remove the visual or mechanical barrier, 75 feet from the property line for a six-foot tall wall and fence on the property line. Number four, divergence from section 1208.01, to allow for a reduced building separation to 78 feet, three inches, to the rear or north of the property, eight feet to the side, excuse me, to the west side, eight feet to the adjacent PCD parcel, and 85 feet to the adjacent residential parcels to the east of the property, and 100 feet to the front proposed right-of-way line. And then finally, number five, divergence from section 1904.18, to reduce the required parking ratio to one space for every 500 square feet of floor area.
I'm gonna finish the motion.
This motion to recommend approval of the subject preliminary development plan incorporated within the zoning map amendment, also known as rezoning application, is based on the following findings of fact and conclusions, in that the zoning commission has determined that these divergences promote or do not have an adverse impact on the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the present and future inhabitants of Genoa Township, the quality of life within Genoa Township through the protection of the total environment, prevention of nuisances and hazards, and the provision of adequate light, air, and convenient access to property, the assurance of the compatibility of land uses which are either adjacent or in proximity to each other, the orderly development of all lands within the township to its appropriate use, and the most appropriate use of land to facilitate and provide adequate public and private improvements.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion?
Nope.
Mr. Schaefer, roll.
Roll call, Mr. Benner.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Leff.
Yes, motion passes. That concludes that portion of the meeting, it's 7:45, thank you very much, gentlemen. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
All right, the time is now 7:45, I now call to order Bob Webb Nook at Highland Lakes LLC requesting approval of a final development plan amendment to adjust building envelope dimensions and common open space designations on 18.6794 acres at 5960 and 6090 Big Walnut Road, Galena, Ohio 43021, and 6089 Victory Gate, Westerville, Ohio 43082, currently zoned planned residential district PRD, also known as the Nook at Highland Lakes, zoning case number 2023-01. Anybody speaking on this matter, please rise and be sworn in. If you will speak, say anything, ask any questions. All right, do you share the tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth, so help you God? Thank you. Be seated. Following exhibits were updated or added. Exhibit E, the staff technical review dated February 8th, 2023, for February 15, 2023. Exhibit F, the staff memo dated February 8th, 2023, for February 15, 2023. Exhibit G, all public comments received between December 12, 2022, and February 15, 2023. And exhibit H, revised application and plans which were received January 24 of 2023. Joe, Mr. Schaefer, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, sir. I'm taking a moment, my soul for my previous application. Okay, you know, I'm gonna end this, it's also continued, yes, as you noted, so, it's like I did in previous hearing, I was just jumped right into the changes that were submitted by the applicant after the meeting. So, the changes to the open space designation, or how called on exhibit E, 3.1, 3.2, they essentially remain unchanged from what you saw the last time, it's, it's been updated and supplemented, so the memo reflects that. You do have two new divergences that are requested, these are divergences, I suspect, were gonna need to be requested on purpose last month, now that here they are reported. So they are, one, a divergence to section 903.03.82, which requires PRDs to have 100-foot perimeter setbacks to any adjacent non-PRD residential zone property. The proposal is to maintain the previously approved 50-foot buffer, but to decrease the buffers to units 1 through 9, a two-foot, three-inch decrease from existing in the rear slash north of each unit, for units 13 to 14, a seven-foot, three-inch decrease from existing in the rear east side of each unit, for units 15 to 19, a two-foot, three-inch decrease from existing in the rear west side of each unit, it's 30, it's seven-foot change. And then also, the second divergence is to section 903.03.84, which requires 170-foot setback from adjacent rightaways, is being requested, to the proposal to maintain existing 200-foot setback from the rightaway center line off Big Walnut Road, to decrease the 170-foot setback from the rightaway line to allow for the following improvements, unit 14 would have 6 feet, 4 inches approximately, and unit 15 would have 29 feet, 6 inches. And I'm sorry, I just realized I didn't have the microphone on. So, regarding the divergences, I'm gonna go off script here real quick, these divergences are primarily derived from the fact that this PRD was approved under an old iteration of the zoning resolution. So, while they are changing some of the open space designations by a few feet here and there, big picture wise, the layout of the plan is not changing. What's really changed on them is the zoning code, in our PRD code. We used to measure the setback from the road, it used to be 200 feet from center line, a few years ago, we changed it to 170 feet from the right-of-way line. And it's the same thing with the perimeter buffer, when they came through, the perimeter buffer setback requirements weren't nearly as prescriptive as they are now. It met code at the time, and in some areas, it does meet code, but in some areas, it's what we would consider a legal non-conformance, where it was permitted at the time, and was continued to allow in perpetuity, but they've actually are asking to go further, which is increasing the non-conformance, which is the reason that the divergence needs to be requested. So again, it's not a result of any substantial change on the site, it's just more of a fact that the code changed on them, and we need to document that we're still okay with the fact that these changes would not be consistent with the current code in those respects. Other notes and changes, I had requested some measurements regarding... Other notes and changes, I had requested some measurements regarding the as-built, identify the front setbacks and side setbacks from building to building, on the separation be provided. Those measurements have been provided on exhibit D-3.2. I asked for a lot of changes regarding some of the verbiage, the encroachment into the open space, or what could be built in the, in the limited common element area, I should say, and I provided some sample verbiage, which they have incorporated into the development text. If you recall, there was a lot of conversation. These condos always sort of pose a challenge because they don't have actual lot lines, so how we measure setbacks and where decks can be built and not be built, that's always been a challenge with these types of developments, and it's one of the reasons, as we talked about the last meeting, we're here this evening. And there were some concerns raised at the last meeting, and even internally among staff, that maybe we needed to tweak that language a little bit, so that's what you have before you this evening in the development text. Hopefully, cross our fingers, we've got it right this time and provided the clarification that is needed. I also asked for additional screening, if sometime be added. The applicant has added additional plantings as shown in exhibit D1, so that's appreciated. And I also had some commentary about existing trees, which were originally supposed to be retained for the development plan, original development plan, have been or likely will be lost due to the construction, and that maybe they offset or mitigate that disturbance by providing some additional trees on the site as close to the area of the trees that are being disturbed as possible, knowing that we still want them to plant them in areas where the trees are actually going to survive. And they have provided some exist, verbiage regarding that matter in the development text as well. So jumping into the tech review, again, as you can see, they've addressed all the significant comments under the development review. Anything you see there that is still outstanding is all just informational. Under the divergence review, it just documents the two divergences I just went through, although I will note, I think they can remove unit 30 from the divergence request pertaining to the perimeter buffer. The 7-foot change is actually to the benefit of the buffer and is improving the legal nonconformance, as such cobra life for this unit is not needed. Just because they're changing it, because, because they're changing it for the better, even if it's not being made code compliant, they're, they're going the right direction and actually increasing the buffer width, even though they're not meeting compliance, they're, they're getting it, they're making it better in that instance. So I don't think for unit 30 on that side, that actually needs to be part of the divergence. Is it harming anything being in there? No, but again, just pure technicality standpoint. And the rest of the commentary really in there is just, again, informational. There was no concern by police, fire, maintenance regarding any of these changes, because it's not changing the road us or, or layout. Those departments really don't have much concern over open space designations. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm turning it back over to you.
Mr. Ferris. Turn your lights on. Say your names and addresses.
Good evening, I'm Todd Ferris with Ferris Planning and Design, 4876 Cemetery Road.
Dan Griffin, 5672 Evans Farm Drive.
And we have Kirk Daniels with us as well, with Bob Webb, in case we have any questions that he can answer. Obviously, we went over this in some detail at our last meeting. We're asking for certain modifications to the, to the open space, moving those lines around some. Just a reiteration, we're still not going over the 50-foot perimeter setback that was in place at the time that this code was done. We still aren't going any closer to the roadway at the time that this code, or this code was done and this plan was done. So, so we're not infringing on any of, of those previous code requirements at the time, nor the open space. We're still in compliance with, with the base zoning that this, this condominium is under, but we are asking that we modify those lines slightly just based off of what the market is asking for at the time that we're building now versus when we came in for a final development plan. Things have changed. Some people want different things than what we thought they were going to need. So, you know, fairly straightforward, I think. Joe is obviously putting on, what's the legal term, the suspenders and a belt with, with his divergence requests, with making sure that, that we add those to modi, or to modify those to meet current code now, since that did change, and we have done that, and I like to thi, I'm glad to think that we actually put something extra in there with lot 30, so we can, we'll take that back out. I, you know, I really don't have anything to add to this. We, we've doubled the buffers on the, on the site. What was a very decent buffer is, is literally twice as much as it is now. So, you know, what would probably have taken five years to, to mature is now going to take two and a half, so you won't be standing there. So, so they're going to get the benefit of, of double the evergreen trees because of the, the reduction of the open space.
Nothing else?
I'll wait for questions if, you know. I, we, I'm pretty sure, and Kirk, we've talked about it, and it was late when I drove over here, so I didn't drive by, but I, we've cleaned up the lots as well. You know, this is, this is correcting something that, you know, happened, and, and I think we all, as we did last time, we think we've got it, we think we've got it right where we can move forward and, and beneficial for the surrounding neighbors as well as the neighbors that are in there that want to build some patios on their outside, so.
Open up public comment? Anybody? One wants, one choice? All right, public comment's closed. Commissioner? Anybody want to start?
I don't have any questions. I mean, I, from a statement perspective, I think this is actually more, as I think somebody mentioned, a legal fiction or, than anything else, that because we're, they're constructing patios that we need to change, open space, I don't even want to say lot lines, because they're not lot lines. So, nothing's changing with respect to the layout. I mean, I support the variances. We're moving imaginary lines, which we are, I mean, that's what it is.
No, I looked at, I looked at the landscape plans and I looked at everything. I don't have any additional questions.
It's all the landscape, that's already all in, right?
I think so. When I drive out there, that I see that the evergreens are in there, have they put them all in? I don't know, but, but I think the buffers are generally in place, so they will.
I didn't count, I didn't count.
Yeah, I didn't either, I didn't, but, but they're going to, they're going to then now double.
Right, I'm just curious, because that's, I'm just thinking the adjacent residents, and you know, the buffering is, those, that's big for them.
Yes.
And you, you mentioned, sir, that, you know, you've done good things for the adjacent residents too, what particularly?
Well, we were talking about the, one of the neighbors came over and, and behind us was about cleaning the lots with some mounds on it, and we had some weird weather, and I talked to Kirk and his people who've gone over from Bob Webb's. We also, I think last time, we were talking about with these condominium projects when we're selling, and we have some of the neighbors here that, you know, bought, we have gone to the salespeople at, at Bob Webb, and, and we are, as soon as this gets approved, we are taking this map, blowing it up, and we've gone through the condominium laws and, and how to explain those to people buying. So this is really, I think it's, it's a great correction for everybody to, to make sure that people can start enjoying the outdoors and these patios, so.
And is Bob Webb, is there a way that do, the people buying the house sign something that says they recognize, is that what you're going to do that?
Yeah, I've drafted all that, and we're just waiting to attach this map.
And this is not necessarily for tonight, but things like the dog fence and stuff, some of those things, are we going to require those people to move those things, not, I mean, is, is there a dog underlying fence out in, in the common space?
If it's underground, I wouldn't have anything to say about it, because we don't write permits for the invisible fences. So at that point, it's really a condo association issue, is how they want to handle it.
Just as long as we let people know they can't continue to put stuff out there. Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah. Yeah, he already told me that he was going to do that, so I think that's a good idea, that people know what to, to buy.
Are there more plantings coming, or you think you're all done with landscaping?
Well, there will be more plantings coming with, with this, it'll double it now. Yeah, yeah.
So what's the, what's the schedule?
That answers your.
Good question, Kirk. Springtime, obviously, is a good thing to, time to be putting in evergreen trees, so I, I don't know, we didn't discuss that, but I would think it would be.
We like planting, we like planting in March and April, you know, right before it gets too wet. So right near the end of March, that's how we've always done it.
Kirk Daniels from Bob Webb, 3709 Shadowstone Court in Columbus, Ohio. And I was confirmed, yes, spring will be the time we'll be doing additional plantings. We'll show it in a little bit, document.
Thank you. So you talked to the lady who came over last time, you talked to her about this?
About the additional plantings?
Yeah, she was okay with that.
And everything? Well, I'm sure she, I'm sure she is. I gave her my number, and she didn't call me after that, but I wanted to make sure these.
Well, thanks for jumping on stuff and fixing this up.
Thank you for understanding.
All right. Nothing else you need to be doing going forward, right? Comments, questions for us, or anything like that? I'm sorry, but public comment's closed, so we're, we're not going to go there. Good? All right. Vergence review.
Okay. The commission reviewed each divergence request against the standards set forth within section 2707 of the township's zoning resolution to determine if such a request is warranted. Per section 2707.07, unless a deviation from development standards is specifically approved as a divergence, the same shall be complied with. Number one, a divergence from section 903.03A2 to reduce the 100-foot setback from non-PRD residential to previously approved 50 feet, with some units encroaching closer to 50 feet foot, 50-foot setback as listed in development text. And number two, divergence from section 903.03A4 to allow for units 14 and 15 to encroach into the setback from Big Walnut Road as per development text. So the question is, and I would submit to you, Mr. Chair, that these divergences promote or do not have an inverse, impact on the conservation and protection of the natural resources, scenic areas, wildlife habitat, and historical and unique natural features of the land, the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the present and future inhabitants of Genoa Township, the quality of life within Genoa Township through the protection of the total environment, the prevention of nuisance and hazards, and the provision of adequate light, air, and convenient access to property. Number four, the assurance of the compatibility of land uses which are either adjacent or in proximity to each other. Number five, the orderly development of all lands within the township to its appropriate use. And number six, the most appropriate use of land to facilitate and provide adequate public and private improvements. As to whether or not this is a major or minor amendment, section 2710.03, should a final development plan amendment request represent a substantial departure from the intent of the original proposal, i.e. a major amendment, said modification or amendment shall be subject to submission requirements and procedures set forth herein. The following shall be considered substantial departures from the original application and following review and recommendation of the zoning commission shall be subject to final consideration by the Board of Trustees. A, a significant change in the use or character of the development; B, a significant increase in overall coverage of structures; C, an increase in the density; D, an increase in the problems of traffic circulation and public utilities; E, a significant reduction in approved open space; F, a reduction of required off-street parking and loading space; G, a reduction in required pavement widths; or H, a reduction of the acreage in the planned development. Mr. Chair, I would move to declare the subject final development, development plan amendment application, Bob Webb Nook at Highland Lakes LLC, zoning commission case number 2023-01, including all plans and materials, a minor amendment of the final development plan per section 2710.03 of the Genoa Township Zoning Resolution, thus not requiring subsequent action by the Board of Trustees. I make this motion for the following reason, in that basically, there's no increase in density, there's no change to the layout, or anything with respect to the substantive terms of the final development plan, other than moving, as I mentioned previously in my comments, imaginary lines to accommodate the wishes of the residents of the community.
A second amendment.
Discussion? Comments, questions? Roll, Mr. Schaefer.
Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Berner.
Sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Leff.
It is a minor motion. Before we move forward, was there any discussion on divergence? Any questions? Said? No? All right, good, onward.
So. I think we're at page 12. Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the following, the subject final development plan amendment application, including all plans and materials, which have been deemed by this commission to be a minor amendment pursuant to section 2710.03, submitted by Bob Webb Nook at Highland Lakes LLC, to revise the limited common element areas and open space designations on approximately 18.6794 acres of property located at 6089 Victory Gate, Westerville, Ohio, 43082, and 5960 and 6090 Big Walnut Road, Galena, Ohio, 43021, commonly known as Nook at Highland Lakes, currently zoned planned residential district, zoning commission case number 2023-01, incorporating exhibits A through H, and we do not have any commitments from the applicant. I further move to approve the following divergences from the Genoa Township Zoning Resolution as further detailed in exhibit H. Number one, a divergence from section 903.03A2 to reduce the 100-foot setback from non-PRD residential to previously approved 50 feet, with some units encroaching closer to 50-foot setback as listed in the development text. And number two, a divergence from section 903.03A4 to allow for units 14 and 15 to encroach into the setback from Big Walnut Road as per the development text. This motion to approve the subject final development plan amendment application is based on the following findings of fact, which I detailed earlier in my divergence review, namely items 1 through 6, and I'll just focus on number 6, the most appropriate use of land to facilitate and provide adequate public and private improvements, but I believe all six apply.
A second amendment.
Mr. Schaefer.
Mr. Berner.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Leff.
Yes, motion passes. The time is now 8:07. That concludes this hearing. Thank you very much. All right. We're good, or we need a break or not? Are we good?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, and the time is now 8:08. I now call the next case to order. Genoa, oh, by the way, before I read this in, we will be opening the comp plan, we will work on comp plan for a little while, we will move to ZR, we will finish at 9:30 this evening, that is the goal, because we are having a second meeting later in this month, okay? So we're going to have a limited amount of time, and we'll go forward. So, we, but we will open both of them, so we'll open and close this one, we will continue it, we will open the other one and go forward. All right, so now called to order at 8:08, Genoa Township Zoning Commission initiated a comprehensive plan, plan amendment, zoning case 2023-02, to the January 7, 2019 revision of the 2016 Genoa Township Comprehensive Plan to update land use and density recommendations in designated planning areas, chapter 4 and the Comprehensive Plan Map, deleted outdated text, chapter 5, and update actions which have been completed since the previous plan, chapter 5. Anybody speaking tonight, going to come walk up to the mic, please rise, you'll be sworn in if you're going to speak at all to this, this evening, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear the tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you, be seated. Legal notice for this meeting was printed and published on February 1, 2023, in the Delaware Gazette, and posted at the General Township Hall on January 24, 2023. The following were marked as exhibits A through G, A, the legal notice, B, the affidavit advertisement, C, the sign-in sheet, D, the comp plan amendment dated January 17, 2023. Exhibit E, the DCRPC recommendation made will be discussed during the February 23 meeting. Exhibit F, staff's PowerPoint presentation presented February 15, 2023, and exhibit G, all And exhibit G, all public comments received between January seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three and February fifteenth of twenty-twenty-three. Mr. Schaefer, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and just for point of clarification, the D C R P C recommendation, Regional Plannings meeting is next Thursday, so that twenty-third refers to their meeting, and then, once they make their recommendation, they usually make it the same night. Um, I plan on bringing that to you at the meeting on the twenty-seventh.
Thank you.
So, I did discuss whether or not I should prepare some slides with the chairman, and he thought that would be a good idea, so I did throw some slides together, I'm gonna forewarn everyone, no one else aside from me has really looked at them, so, um, here we go. I've got, also, um, I'm gonna gloss over a lot of the content on them, the commission was here, people I know in the audience have the ability to read, we will post these to the website. Just for the sake of brevity, though, I'm, I'm probably gonna, you know, try to stay high level as much as I can. Um, but there are people here who probably don't know a lot of the background, so I do have to cover some of that. So, the trustees directive and expectations, uh, the directive was to address concerns raised by the community regarding density, as we all well know, pertaining new residential developments. We obviously want to maintain consistency between the comp plan and the zoning resolution, we obviously want something that's legal and defensible, and the board established the deadline for the commission to offer the recommendation as April first of this year, we are on track to do that, which is good. Uh, zoning terms, I'm not gonna read through all of these to save us the time, um, but I do realize there's those in the audience, probably am also watching at home, who may read this later, don't know what all of these terms are, so I have put these slides in here. These are not the zoning resolution's definitions, these are definitions Joe wrote. Sort of just giving layman's terms of what these items are, because there's just, I think sometimes we take for granted the terminology, and that a lot of people who are attending these hearings are doing so for the first time and may not know what all of these items are. Let's see, hopefully the clicker still works, there we go. Uh, I highlighted these two terms, so I'm gonna talk about these specifically, because the density numbers we're talking about utilize these terms, and they're, they're very much hyper-specific to zoning, so. The density in Genoa Township, we calculate it using a net developable acreage standard, as opposed to a growth standard. So, a growth standard would be, you have ten units on ten acres, it's ten units divided by ten equals one unit per acre. Net developable, we say, um, we know in a lot of developments, X amount of that land is going to be streets and stormwater ponds and utilities that no one ever can build a house on, so we don't give you credit for that when we calculate your density, so we automatically take fifteen percent of that acreage away from the site, and there's also provisions that certain other elements on a site may also get removed, wetlands or some other features, if they exist. So, that net developable acreage number, that N D A number, um, that's what we're talking about. It's the total size of a developable tract minus the fifteen percent, as well as any other items that don't get counted towards the density. And then, net density is again, that calculation of the number of units divided by the net developable acre. And again, I go through that because that's how we've written our standards, so if you don't know what N D A or net developable acre is, the rest of this would have not made a lot of sense. Uh, moving forward, um, we also utilize some of these other terms, you'll hear us talk about with conservation development standards, without conservation development standards. With, without conservation development standards, um, the requirements for a developer in a P R D is they have to provide minimum lot sizes, certain setback provisions. But under that, uh, standard, they only have to dedicate forty percent of a tract as open space. If they develop utilizing conservation development standards, that open space dedication gets increased to fifty percent. But the, the trade there is, we allow a lot more flexibility in regards to, um, lot size and setbacks. And a lot of our condo developments have to develop under the conservation development standards, because the, the single-family product in the condos, um, generally are on lot areas or limited common element areas that are smaller than what would be required if, um, they weren't utilizing conservation development standards. So, that's one of those clever ways that we work to try to make sure those condos are giving us more open space. Um, and anyone who was paying attention during the last couple hearings knows very well now what a divergence is. I'm waiting for the clicker to catch up here. Maybe? Okay, planning and zoning history, again, not gonna go through all of this, um, I'm just gonna focus on the highlights. Last comprehensive plan update was adopted, um, back in two thousand nineteen, very, in January two thousand nineteen, and significant amendments were made to the zoning resolution to revise the P R D standards in conjunction with that. And then, the last actual zoning resolution amendment was adopted last year, uh, in fall by the board, and that was the Hoover watershed overlay, uh, district. So, factors, again, not gonna go into these, but there are factors that we have to take into consideration when we do these updates. You know, we can't just do whatever we want, and there's a lot of things we look at. So, I've just spelled out some of those things here, particularly the, the rapid growth in the Columbus metro area, and how a lot of Delaware counties are expected to absorb a lot of that. That absorption has probably started to shift a little eastward, given the intel announcement, um, but we're still gonna, we and the other townships in the area, Southern Delaware County, and even mid and upper Delaware County now, I would expect are gonna absorb a lot of that growth, as well as probably Pickaway County and some of those other more popular development corridors. Obviously, there's a whole litany of list of things the township actually doesn't have control over, um, as, as we look at these things. We have limitations, obviously constitutional limitations, which is why we always like to have legal counsel here with us. Anything we do has to meet the rationale of it has to serve the public health, safety, or general welfare. We have to make sure we're treating properties equally, we often get the question of, well, why can't you just chase to the zoning code and say, in this area, you do this density, in this area, you do this density, and the law essentially reads, is my understanding, and again, Jennifer's gonna pinch me if I'm wrong, that any property under the same zoning district designation has to be treated equally. So, that's why we're taking the approach that we're doing. And we've, we've unfortunately learned this bottom half, this lesson, very well over the past several years, that when a comprehensive planning zoning resolution conflict, the resolution generally prevails, and this is because the comp plan is under Ohio, in Ohio, this isn't the case in all states, but in Ohio, it's just a guideline. And technically speaking, I know we're doing the public hearing process, but if you go to the revised code and look up, what is a comprehensive plan, and what are the process, requirements for adopting one, there, you will find absolutely nothing. So, that said, we generally try to treat it like a zoning resolution amendment, we do the public hearing process, because we feel like, um, that's the best route to go. That said, it's not subject to referendum, so it's not law. Any zoning law would be subject to referendum, that's the big key difference, and I think that's why the resolution ultimately prevails, because if we were to pass a zoning law, the public still has the right to say, no, we don't like that, we're gonna subject that to referendum. That's not the case with the comprehensive plan, we could pass a comprehensive plan, and the public may not like it, but they can't rescind it, they can give us all sorts of grief about it, and pressure us into rescinding it, but they can't themselves take a legal action to rescind it, as far as I know. So, the process, here's where we're at, the green checkmarks identify the stuff we've already done, we, we already know the concerns and have discussed solutions, we drafted the amendment, you formally initiated it at your last meeting, and it's hard to see, but the, the yellow hourglass there are both the pending items, the regional planning review, which I already mentioned, as well as the public hearing process that we're currently going through, and then for the dedication of everyone who's not familiar with this process, once the commission is done, um, they will vote, and whatever the commission's vote is, is merely a recommendation, it's not the final say. This will all go to the Board of Trustees, and we'll do all of these hearings, uh, again, and the board has the final say on yea or nay, and also has the right to modify the documents as they see fit. And then, for the zoning resolution part of this, um, the referendum period is thirty days by law. Again, here's the process, those are just all the dates specific to all the actions, so I won't go through all of those. Approach, um, so this was the agreed-upon approach, as the commission discussed, and my understanding of it, uh, putting specific density recommendations back into the comp plan, and then revising the zoning resolution, um, to match that, so that the maximum permitted densities in the resolution are equal to the lowest recommendation in the comprehensive plan. This prevents the documents from conflicting and avoids the problems we've had in the past, where, um, we had a higher number in the resolution, a lower number in the comp plan, and then we had people said, that's great what your comprehensive plan says, but the law says I can do higher, that's what I want, and that's what you're gonna give me. That was the argument we kept hearing, we obviously did not like hearing that, so now we're here trying to fix it. We're also gonna require divergences for densities exceeding the zoning resolution standard, but that are otherwise compliant with the comprehensive plan, so. You'll see the numbers in the moment, how this makes, in a moment, how this all sort of functions and makes sense. But, there's gonna be instances where certain planning areas, we're gonna actually be okay with higher densities, like in Planning Area One, but because the zoning resolution number had to come down so much, the comp plan is actually gonna recommend, or be okay with, a higher density than what the zoning resolution would otherwise be, so we're building a standard in the divergence review that, um, someone could ask for a density divergence, but they need to specifically, basically cite that this density divergence is okay, because it's still consistent with your comp plan. What we don't wanna do moving forward is grant a density divergence for a density that doesn't meet the zoning resolution, nor the comp plan, um, that is, otherwise, it really undermines what we're trying to do here. In terms of planning area, this is just, again, I may be talking to people, we know the planning areas by heart, but some people in this room may be seeing them for the first time, so, because the densities are broken down by planning area, I'm just gonna talk about them real quick. So, as you can see on the map here, uh, Planning Area One is everything south of Big Walnut Road. Generally, or mostly west of Hoover Reservoir, with the exception of some of those lots that are on Hoover Reservoir, excluding the North Gate Commercial area and the Chandler, um, Corporate Park Commercial area. Planning Area Two is the southeastern portion of the township, um, that's essentially Lake of the Woods. I believe historically, that's been called out separately, as opposed to just two and three being together, because Lake of the Woods used to have its own, um, water plant. I don't believe that's the case anymore, but historically, they did. So, um, that's why it's always been sort of viewed differently, and relatively speaking to the rest of that side of the water, it was the most developed area of, of the township on that side. Planning Area Three is the balance of the east side of Hoover Reservoir, north of essentially the Red Bank Road Bend. Planning Area Four, um, is roughly where the Hoover watershed exists, uh, on the western side, north of Big Walnut Road. You know, the watershed and the property lines don't jive exactly, so I think they did their best to sort of just follow it as close as they could. But it's essentially everything east of Rome Corners Road, and then if Rome Corners continued south, you draw imaginary line, it would go right path between the Worthington Gardens parcel and the Genoa Baptist Church, and then it's sort of everything east of that, and then east of Route Three, so that's Vinmar Farms, Vinmar Village, Reserve at Vinmar, McNamara Park, Township Fire Station, and, uh, preservation parks property. Planning Area Five is obviously the northwest quadrant, everything north of Big Walnut Road that I haven't already discussed, and then Planning Area Six again, is the sort of commercial corridor, Frost Road, North Gate, Chandler, and the portions of Maxtown that we heard earlier this evening. So, I'm gonna, these slides specifically go compare the current plan to the proposed plan. I'm not gonna read through all of this, because I did a couple of map illustrations that I think really do a better job of highlighting it, but again, I wanted to make sure we at least provided a table for those who might read this later, of a breakdown of, here's what the plan says, now, here's what's being proposed. And I have it broken down in this table by each of the planning areas. And then, some of the other revisions is noted in legal description, removing some outdated references from chapter five, updating chapter five, um, to identify some of the tasks, the to-do list items we had put in there that we've since completed, and then obviously, the comprehensive plan map has to get updated as well, to reflect, um, what we're doing here. So, here's the map I was talking about, I think makes it a lot easier for people to understand, um, what's going on. So, this map depicts what the minimum lot size recommendations are gonna be for each of those planning areas. You can see it's essentially two acres for all the residential areas, with the exception of Planning Area One, where if you have sewer, will allow you to go down as small as thirty thousand square feet. That would be the suburban residential zoning district, and then, because we don't allow any residential type development in Planning Area Six, that's why it's not applicable. And this is the one that probably most people are interested in, this is the maximum density recommendations now that we have for each planning area, as currently drafted. I know there may still be some discussion on this matter, so for Planning Area One, the recommendation now would be one point eight or two point two units per net developable acre, so the smaller number is if someone's developing without conservation development standards, that's the forty percent open space provision. The larger number is if they're developing with the conservation development standards, that's the fifty percent open space provision. And then, the numbers in the parentheses are, um, if that property is in the Hoover watershed overlay district, we're saying you can't go higher than one point one or one point three five, again, depending on whether or not you use conservation development, or don't use conservation development. That's for the P R Ds, for the Plan Community Facilities District, one of the holes I sort of recognized as we were going through this process is, Plan Community Facilities technically allows some residential type uses. It's more the care type of facilities, centers, um, but those are technically still dwelling units, so, and there was no maximum density in the comp plan or the zoning resolution on that. So, I thought this would be a good time to make sure we put a cap on that, because, um, we don't wanna, we don't wanna proposal to come in that is well exceedance of what we had hoped for. And I also didn't wanna see something that was really a P R D try to get creative and try to wiggle its way in through as the P C F window, and say, wow, it's really a P C F, it's a care center, and try to get basically unlimited density, so. Trying to address a couple issues there. So, there, we're sticking just with the two point two, P C F doesn't have the conservation or no conservation development distinct, uh, distinctions, so there, it's just one flat number. The two point two, or if you're in the Hoover watershed overlay, the one point three five. That's probably the most complicated of the areas, um, aside from Planning Area Five. Planning Areas Two and Three are essentially the same, uh, the lowest P R D density recommendation would be one, without conservation development standards. With conservation development standards, one point two five. And because those numbers were already in line with the Hoover watershed overlay, those numbers don't change if the water, uh, the overlay applies. And then, in P C F, again, we've lowered that number to the one point two five to be more consistent with, uh, what we had done in the overlay. Again, Planning Area Three reflects that, Planning Area Four, those numbers are one point one or one point three five. For P R Ds, and again, the overlay is equal to that, because it's, it's similar, and the P C F would be maxed out at one point three five, and again, the overlay equals that, because it's similar. And then, Planning Area Five is the only other one where you start to get a distinction between the, um, the, the base recommendation and the, and the watershed overlay, so P R Ds in Planning Area Five would either one, one point three five without conservation development standards, or one point six five with conservation development standards, with the overlay, that would be, um, only maxed out at one point one or one point three five. And then, as you can see, their P C F recommendation is one point six five, unless it's in the overlay, which case it could only max out at one point three five. I know that was a lot of numbers to throw at everyone, but I think the map does probably a better job than me trying to explain it, but I wanted to make sure I got all of that information on the record for those who might be listening or watching. I'm actually gonna skip this part of the slides, because this actually talks about the changes we're making in the zoning resolution, but we're not in the resolution part of the hearing, we're talking about the comp plan, so. It's probably actually a good place to stop, the, the background on the map here, you can see, we also made changes to show that the S R zoning recommendation only exists for Planning Area One. All the other areas in Planning Two, areas two, three, and four, and five, um, it's rural residential, we wouldn't entertain suburban residential at this time. And then, again, Planning Area Six is not applicable, because, um, we view that as our commercial and industrial core. I know there's been questions I've gotten over the years about doing mixed views, but I don't think that was a topic appropriate for this discussion, given the charge we were provided by the board. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm sure everyone's heard me talk enough, I am going to turn it back over to you.
Mr. Schaefer? We will now move this up to your public comment. Um, this question is, anybody?
I, I got a question.
Does multiple, say your name and answer.
Uh, Clint Warner, fifty-nine twenty Plum Road. On this new Hoover overlay or whatever? It says something in there that even if a part of that parcel is in the Hoover watershed, then the whole partial is in the watershed. And what significance does that really mean if, if you're planning on putting a development there? The number of houses, or?
Any one part of what goes development touches that, or is in, then the entire development is the one?
Okay. And that changes?
The density would be lower.
The density?
So, there would be less houses?
If we go back to the original map, the map that we had there, can we pull that back up?
Yeah.
Where we had the densities in each one?
Mm-hmm.
There was another number below it, that was, if we called it the function, then there's another density.
Sir, are you asking about where, because of Mariluna, over there? Okay, and Mr. Schaefer, wasn't that submitted before?
That does not apply to Mariluna, because that was submitted prior to the overlay going into effect.
Okay.
So, when you submit a preliminary development plan, whatever the zoning resolution is, at that moment, that is what applies to the submission.
Okay.
The overlay was.
The overlay, the overlay isn't gonna override that?
No, the overlay was put into effect and approved after that was put in, that was requested.
Okay.
So, there is not applied to that.
Okay. What else was I gonna say on that? Okay, so that overlay doesn't do it, now, when they put in for it, don't they have? Now, when they put in for it, don't they have to have signatures of the?
This thing, we need to, we're strictly talking about the comp plan. There is no discussion about Mariluna.
Okay.
Do you have a question about the comp plan?
Not really. The numbers up there are hard to comprehend, because, you know, two ways of looking at it, you know? If you've got, you know, people look at it and think, okay, that's 1.8 houses per acre. But when you start doing the math on it, on the different parts, it's hard to, hard to figure out. Because, you know, everybody just thinks, okay, if it's a 10-acre lot, like he said, there'll be 10 houses. Every house is going to be on an acre, okay? So then you start looking at some of these numbers, and you say, okay, it's going to be 1.35 houses per acre, okay? So it's just, like he says, kind of confusing when you're looking at it, trying to, how big are the lot sizes? That's the, you know?
Right, and you look at, think about square footage, it's 43,560 square feet per acre.
That's right.
So you figure it out from that point. And that's why I would look at what rural residential is, what suburban residential is, and then moving upward into the PRD. And that's where we tried to come up with a justification to some of these numbers. It wasn't just, hey, this is the number that you feel is great, or what we want, but we had to pull up essential methodology.
Yeah, yeah. And the only other thing on like the comprehensive plan is, why does it get changed so much? You look back in like the old records, and it was like, you know, they didn't change it for seven years or nine years. And you look at it now, it was changed in 2008, 2009, you know, 2016, 2019. You know, it's continually changing. And I just always say, it seems like every time it changes, the numbers, the lot sizes go down.
Well, again, so we regulate the zoning resolution, not the comp plan.
Okay.
So if there was a discrepancy between the end, and it's all referenced back to the comp plan, so the numbers were removed from the comp plan, which is enforceable, through the zoning resolution. So the last change made those modifications. The resolution is what we are, what we can regulate, that is all.
Okay.
And I can speak to the, I'm sorry, Mr. Carter, do you want to?
The PRD, the Planned Residential Development. What happens in these planning areas, the reason, these numbers only apply if somebody has to do a PRD. So that's why, and the whole idea behind a PRD is that builders can have smaller lots, but we require them to be 50% green space, which is good. That's where you start getting those smaller lots, and we have these setbacks, 100 feet from rural residential, 170 and all that. That's where that comes in, and that's why that number seems confusing, when you hear those numbers. But it's, it's for the builders, they can, you know, get their houses a little closer together, easier on electric and all that, but also protects the, you know, the residents who are already there, around there, to some extent. It's just a matter of how many are you going to be allowed to put on that 50% that's left. You know, that's why a PRD is built.
Okay, that helps it all.
Yeah, it does, you know?
I think to Mr. Carter's, I think to Mr. Carter's point, this is a good point, that this, this is the worst-case scenario in terms of the density that anybody may see in these planning districts. Because on the flip side, a developer may say, well, I've got 10 acres here, and I'm going to do 2-acre lots, or I'm going to do 3-acre lots, and I'm only going to build 3 McMansions or whatever on this property. So this, for perspective, is quote-unquote worst-case scenario in terms of residential development. Density, I should say.
I always laugh, because I look at, you know, I'm on 5 acres over there, and I always think, well, I could fill my pond back in and build 20 houses here. But it's not going to happen, but I just, you know, I, it's, when you look at a piece of land and listen to you guys when you're talking about different stuff, you know, it's, it's 5 feet and this and that, and 10 feet and stuff. And a lot of people here who have land, if it's 10 feet, we don't even worry about it. You know what I mean? The mindset is?
Until somebody builds something 5 feet from your property.
Yeah, I mean, what is it, what is 5 feet here, you know, type of deal? But so, that's all I got for now.
Good.
Thanks.
Thanks, Clint. Anybody else? Did you get sworn in?
I don't believe I did.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, all you've got?
I do.
Thank you, your name and address, please.
It's Brett Watson, 6799 Regency Drive in Westerville Reserve. I've been in the township about 22 years in the, in the same home, and been following these meetings for quite a while, and most of the trustee meetings. I'm happy that you're working on this and addressing it, because I think, you know, when I listen to the residents' talk and some of my own feelings that I, you know, I question is, we were all told what the comprehensive plan was in terms of density. And then as time went on, we realized the zoning resolution is what was enforceable. So lots of times, and what I'm hearing from other people, they move into the area, and they look and see what the density is, and they anticipate that's where it's going to stay. In some cases, they call the township, and the comprehensive plan is what was recited to them, so. And then we see developments that, I think it's just, west of Heritage Church, for example, goes in. I think that's far more dense than 2 houses per acre, or 2.2 houses per acre, those types of things. So a lot of what's going on in the township looks good, and you guys are doing a good job. But I think if you can once and for all get the comprehensive plan, so it is in line with the zoning resolution, that would get rid of the confusion. I think that's where, you know, people were getting irritated and confused, is they thought the comprehensive plan was, you know, pretty much the Bible, and then they found out, well, no, it's got back up to the zoning resolution. So I'm glad that you're working on it, and glad that you're trying to get it fixed.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Sandy Young at 7700 Plum Road. And I came to you guys in 1996 with the comprehensive plan, because they wanted to build a group called Country Time, wanted to purchase my grandparents' farm. And I didn't, it wasn't left to me, so it wasn't mine. And it was a one-man show, because I had to work directly with regional planning. I had to work with the Army Corps of Engineer. I had to work with the Water Department to try to prove the point that they couldn't build that many houses on that land, because I used to ride with my grandpa on the farm, on his tractor. And when he's cutting beans or corn, he'd say, that's a wash, you can't put any. I said, why don't you have anything grow in there? It's because it's a wash. And a wash is where you don't plant, because it washes out. And I happened to build where he said, that's where you're going to put your pond, sis. That's where, guess what, it filled in 30 days. We dug a 20-foot pond, and it filled in that wash. So I think that people, for me, a comprehensive plan, it has changed so much. 71 years now for me, living here in Genoa Township, because my grandparents were first. But it's changed so much, and it gets so confusing. I mean, even rules and regulations have changed. You said you couldn't put a trailer in your driveway. You couldn't have a, couldn't have a recreational vehicle or anything out, but now you can. I always wanted a horse, but I could never have a horse, because I don't have 5 acres. So the hardest part is, it is so hard to understand. And as you get older, there's things you just don't understand. So the simpler you make it, the better it would be, even for people like me. My husband and I think we're going to move. If, and I, I'm not allowed to talk about the development that's coming, but we don't, we don't want, we came from Sawmill Road area. We raised our kids there. There was so much traffic, we had to get the hell out of there. And we moved up on a piece of my grandparents' farm. So that's why I go, do we want to do this the last 10 years of our life? No, I don't want to fight the traffic. So I might be one of the people that buy one of those patio homes, because I won't have to take care of anything. But, I mean, the land. So if you could just make it simple, because people like me, and there are a lot of us, he's catching up with me, so, age-wise. So anyhow, if you just make it as simple as possible, so that we can understand what's going on, it's a lot easier to accept when you understand what's happening. So, thank you.
I need to have just a question, I don't know if you? Come back up to the mic, please.
I don't know if you guys can answer it or whatever, but.
Who are you again?
Clint Warner, 5920 Plum Road.
Thank you.
So when you have like the 40% green space or whatever that's in there, what tax rate does that go under? For instance, say my 5 and 1/2 acres. Okay, I pay taxes on 5 and 1/2 acres, okay? The green space is like having agricultural planted, isn't it? As far as the, the tax of the land?
We're, I'm going to refer to the table over here.
I'm going to defer to Jennifer.
So I'm not a, I'm not a tax expert by any stretch of the imagination. But no, it wouldn't go as far as CAUV in any sense of that, no. Because it's basically residential land. And if you want to get it real detail, and hopefully not bore anyone to tears, it a little bit even determine, this, one more time, depends on if the, if the open space area is in an HOA versus a condo, because those areas are taxed different in a condo. Basically, each owner pays their 1/45th.
The HOAs.
Of their own, of their own. In an HOA, the HOA, which is a nonprofit corporation in Ohio, like, like a corporation, but nonprofit.
Yeah.
They own, they can own the reserve area. I mean, in some, I don't think the township does it this way, but some townships in the central Ohio area, the township wants to be the one who owns the reserve area. And then it's government property, and it's exempt and all those things. So it's hard to say, there's not a great answer to your question, but no, it doesn't get taxed really out of the egg. I mean, that would be the bear, that's such a dream, right?
But I look at some of it and say, okay, there's an 8-acre piece of, of green space right there, and their taxes for the year are $3,500. And I'm thinking, I'm on 5 acres, and they're charging me $7,000, you know? But, so the numbers, you know?
Sort of, it's locked down.
So it's, it's great that it's green space, but if there was a house sitting on it, they'd have to pay taxes for all of it. So you have an area that, if, if it's done in larger homes or whatever, and there is no green space, taxes are being paid on the whole 100 acres. Now you add the 40 acres of green space, and, and I think the township's losing money.
Well, there's a, it's about improvements done to the land. There's a calculation that's in there, so.
Yeah, I mean, but, but on my?
Land is land.
On my taxes, it says, boom, here's what your land is worth, and you, you improved it X amount, okay? But just as what the land is, it seems like they still, because a house is sitting on it, they're charging a lot more on the green space. And, and I haven't sat down and tried to figure out everything, but the things that I look at, because a lot of these developments have 8, this is 8 acres of green space, this is 6 acres. You know, instead of everything being all together, a lot of times, there's a development north of my house, north of Summerwood, and that's how it's kind of broke up, is into like five sections. Okay, the HOA is going to pay for it all, but instead of having it all together, they have it on the maps. When you pull it up on Dallas, the regional site maps and stuff, it'll be 8 acres, 10 acres, and things like that. So I just, I was always curious, thinking, they're losing tax money, and something like that, so.
Well, but remember, and I think where you were going with it is, a parcel, say we got 20 acres of land, right? You're a 5-acre piece today. What you started to say, Mr. Chairman, was, you know, they calculate taxes, and you can go into the county auditor's record and see how they're calculating it, right? If you go to yours or anyone else's.
Yeah.
And you'll see a land rate roughly, and then an improvement. So keep in mind, that on even a 5-acre piece, say, and it's not a good example, because that's fairly small when we're talking this kind of density. But say, let's say it's 20, and we went from 20 acres of land with one improvement, one house, to 20 or 10, 2-acre parcels with 10 houses, then each of those parcels is going to not only get its individual land piece, right? That piece of the pie, but it's going to get that much-upped tax basis based on the improvement, because now there's 10 houses, not just one.
Yeah.
So I think, and I'm, again, not a tax expert, but I think you almost certainly would see, the township's going to certainly see an increase, because that value of the improvement is going up. You're also going to see with the passage of time, and value of property in this area going up. I think is, is probably an understatement. You know, that, that basis is going higher as that has increased as well.
Yeah, some of the numbers, you know, like an patio home, $750,000.
That's exactly it.
Who they talk? All right.
They're selling them.
I know they are.
All right, thanks, Clint.
Thank you.
All right. We'll close public comment on this piece, so to the commission.
Do you need a motion to continue with the fact we already have a second? Say if I have a question?
I just want to quickly explain just why we're doing this. So if people, you guys want to? Okay. I was going to?
I think Joe covered that.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, it seems not to be clear for all the residents. I just wanted to unders, make them, because they don't seem to understand why we do all these changes to the comp plan. Like, it'd be good to have like a sort of more historical perspective about, like, like, once they were taken out, the comp plan, the, the numbers, the density numbers, now we're putting them back in, because it created a problem. So that's why we're putting these numbers back in, because otherwise, you only rely on, on the zoning resolution. And now, because our zoning resolution will have the lowest density number in there, people will have to ask for a divergence, and then they can look at the areas that we give new density numbers in, into the, into the comprehensive plan, so they can request to do more for, to do, to the area that we give the numbers to. But in say it's the lowest number, which will be in the zoning resolution.
So to speak to the question of like, why do the plans keep changing? Well, plans and zoning resolution documents are living, breathing documents. They're ever, they're always going to be changing. They're not going to be static. Now, some communities don't change their resolution and plans for decades. I mean, I think Westerville just updated their comprehensive plan, and like, they were working off of one from like the 60s. So, and that's not like a, you know, anything bad on Westerville. That is not uncommon in, in a lot of areas, especially cities, or even some townships. Like, they just, I, you know, especially in the townships where there isn't a lot changing over several decades.
But you also have to look at developable land and things of that nature.
And also trustee wins.
Yeah, yeah, so that goes into a lot of it, is the polit, you know, I hate to say this, but the, the board changes over years. Different members join the board, there's different priorities, different viewpoints of how they want to do things. So a new iteration board comes in and decides they want to change things and do it their particular way, so they make some changes. And so that's not uncommon. And also, it's a best practice that every five years, you at least open the plan, look at it, and say, hey, has anything substantial happened that may cause some of this information to be outdated, or us need to reconsider some things? And I think you can say in Genoa Township, absolutely yes, every five years, something has at least happened that makes us need to at least take a look at the plan. And the 2008, change in 2008 and then 2009, so I guess I'll go back through the history. So the original, the plan that we're basically working off of was adopted in 99. There was an attempt to amend it in 2004, which would have been about five years. I wasn't here at the time, I didn't live in the area at the time. I get the impression that some of the stuff they wanted to do wasn't terribly popular, so it wasn't successful. They tried again in 2008, a different tactic, that was successful. However, again, I'm under the impression that in 2008, a couple of the things they did did not meet with a resounding approval with some of the residents. So that's why, after getting some feedback of what they had done in 2009, they said, okay, we'll, we'll make some tweaks to it again. And then it sat for a while. And then around 2013, 14, my predecessor actually was going to get rid of the plan and do a brand-new plan, and that was the Genoa 2025 plan, I think is what he called it. And there was a lot of work done on it, and the commission was even working on it up until summer of 2015, right before I got here. And at that time, my predecessor had left, and the commission- And at that time, my predecessor had left and the commission said, you know what? We don't like the direction this is headed, we're going to just shelve it and not do anything with it. So that's why that update didn't happen in fourteen. But we did restart those efforts right after, as I was getting on board in August of fifteen, which led to the twenty sixteen comprehensive plan update. And then, we started hearing a lot about collective development and the zoning resolution taking precedence and harmonization. And, again, there was a different iteration of the board at the time, and they decided they were gonna handle that issue a certain way, which was taking the density, specific density recommendations just out of the plan to eliminate the conflict between the plan and the zoning resolution, which is what we have right now. And that's what we've been asked to go back and revise by the board, and that's why we're here this evening. So that's what the table breaks down in the presentation. If you look at the table in the current, you'll see in the planning areas, no specific recommendation for densities and PRDs in any of the planning areas. It defers to the zoning resolution. We're changing that, putting numbers back in. And again, revising the zoning resolution to eliminate that conflict. So, um, I fully expect, uh, sooner rather than later, especially with everything that's going on out east, especially once we get a better sort of feel and idea of what really that's gonna do, in terms of housing demand and traffic patterns. We, we have some ideas and projections, and I was talking about that stuff even today with the regional planning people. And Harlem Township is supplementing their comprehensive plan or trying to supplement their comprehensive plan to acknowledge what's going on out there and what's happening.
Yeah, it looks like they want to maintain their rural residential feel too. I mean, that's their first thing they list, kind of protecting themselves like we're trying to do.
Correct, absolutely. Um, but also acknowledging that, you know, there's, there's gonna be pressures in development and keeping things large, lot acres is probably not gonna be realistic, that they're probably gonna have to make some accommodations, possibly put some overlays in place that if development does come, that they are at least, they, they are under significant development growth pressure because A, they're closer to Intel, obviously, and they've got basically sewer pressure, development pressures from Galena. Columbus is coming up from the south, they even have New Albany and even a little bit of Johnstown. So, I mean, they, they literally have coming from all sides, so they, different position than us. Yes, sir.
The Hoover overlay or any overlay? Like you were talking about one in the northeast corner, I believe. Can that be annexed if there's an overlay over it?
Just because there's an overlay doesn't mean it's protected from annexation.
I, I didn't think it would be, okay.
Uh, if, what it does though is it puts the township at least in the conversation to stay competitive and makes the decision for a developer possibly a little harder as to whether or not it's more beneficial for them just to annex and go to Columbus and get whatever density Columbus is willing to get them, or stay in the township. There's pros and cons to each. If they join Columbus and annex to Columbus, their development, you know, I, I don't mean to despair, you know? Some people don't mind being in Columbus schools, but that is sometimes not something people are looking for when they're looking at purchasing a house. Similarly, if you're in the city of Columbus, now you're subject to income tax. They've got to sell a development that's in a certain school district and subject to income tax. Whereas if they stay in the township, it may be a different school district and they wouldn't be subject to that income tax. So, some of it is a market decision and a business decision for those builders of, you know? And that's why if you can put yourself competitive in those conversations, you know, it, you're probably never going to give as much density as a Columbus is going to give. But if you can reduce the gap between the two, it may be a harder decision and the developers say, you know, I want to stay in the township. And we saw developers do that here with, um, Barrington and Harvest Win and all that. I mean, they, the township was sort of like, oh, I don't know, we don't want density, and that's how we lost probably Mariner, the area that's all now Mariner's Cove. Well, they learned their lesson and said, well, we don't want to lose any more land to, to the city of Westerville. And again, nothing against Westerville, but we'd like to keep our residents and land within the township borders. So they were more willing to accommodate sort of what Barrington and Harvest Win developers wanted to do. And I think they, those developers also saw, well, we could go to Westerville and, you know? The, in that scenario, everyone was gonna be in Westerville schools regardless, so that wasn't really a factor. But, you know, certainly I'm sure there was other factors that came into play. Probably the, the taxation and how they were marketing that development.
The land on Africa Road that, that Westerville just purchased, that was our land.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's right.
Zero dollars from that land.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's, there's literally probably almost a thousand acres of land that used to be Genoa Township that is now not Genoa Township.
We will not reap the benefit of any of that income.
Now, some of that is hard to compete with unless you get sort of a hard economic development package in place, because a lot of that annexation was for like West art commercial and there was just, because again, we can't collect income tax, there wasn't as much, as much benefit for us to see that land go commercial, although there certainly would have been. Property valuations probably would have gone up and we would have collected that property tax. But, um, that's why the cities are always chasing the commercial and industrial development because they don't have, it's not res, yeah, they have to service, they have to go make emergency run calls, but they're not servicing nearly as much as if it was residents living there. So they get a lot of property tax and income tax, uh, but relative to the services, the cost of services they're providing is, it's a, it's definitely a win for commercial investment. And that's why, you ask why, why are all these cities going after all these big commercial business parks? That's exactly why. It's, 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 it's almost a windfall for them in a lot of ways.
So townships cannot have sewer systems, right? So the big thing is, I mean, Galena, can Galena say, if you want to develop, you have, we're gonna, you have to annex to us if you want our sewer?
That's my understanding.
So really, whatever our, where our numbers are don't really matter to that. I mean, we could go back, in a specific case, I think we would be flexible enough to say, okay, if you stay, we will give a divergence to this because the income is important to us. It's a specific thing. I don't think we want to raise densities to attempt to ally, allay or whatever, that type of thing. Quick question for the, for our lawyer present, please. If, if the zoning resolution says, all development must be done in accordance with the comprehensive plan, does that now make the comprehensive plan part of the zoning resolution for all intents and purposes?
Uh, that's pretty standard language. That's actually the statutory language, to an extent, because that's the one and only place, as Joe mentioned, that the law references a comprehensive plan. It says zoning, the township can adopt zoning in accordance with a comprehensive plan. So, no, I would say that sentence by itself doesn't give, can't give the comprehensive plan the effect of law, because it is what it is as a guidance document, regardless of how we incorporate it that way. Because to do otherwise would, I mean, if the question is, do we just, do we, do we add the comp plan to the backend of our zoning resolution and say it's now the code? It just, that's not how it's, that's not how the statute has set it up that way.
So what does that, I mean, if it says in accordance with the comprehensive plan, is that just a hollow statement or, I mean, because we're gonna have our densities in the comprehensive plan, even though we're gonna do a divergence out of the point seven five, and I get that theory and everything, so that will work, right? With having the points or one point or whatever we're gonna have in the, um.
Yeah.
And then have those. So then that case, the comprehensive plan by divergence will be allowed?
Right, yeah, and that's all proper. I think I'll answer it this way. The, the, the in accordance with, I guess I would even answer the questions about why has the comp plan changed as much as it have, has? And I'd echo what you said, I mean, I have so many townships that are, their, their comp plans are, on a good day, ten years old, and on a bad day, you know, double it, triple it. So the answer is, those things should be harmonious, that's been, that's been said here tonight. That's what's happening, that's what you're doing. And that's what you're doing, in my opinion, a fairly good job of, given that you've comp, that you've amended it as much as you have, right? I had a different conversation about a comp plan last week, week before, where it's like, well, what if they're, I mean, I know you guys are all familiar with this, what if it's so out of date? Which one, what, where, what do we do, where do we go? The answer is, you ought to try to make them consistent with one another. So no, the, the, the way they operate is, as, and I'm not trying to steal your, I mean, that is exactly what Joe said. The resolution has the effect of law, is legislation, is referendable, is amendable, is all of those things. The comp plan, because the law says we have to do zoning in accordance with the comprehensive plan, we have a comprehensive plan, we say that here's, here's more of the plan, the aspiration, the guidance, and here's the zoning resolution that carries it into effect. And you're right, there can be divergences and changes from those things, but we can have variance, variances, divergences and changes from our law, so.
So with this, um, this is our situation was, it says a maximum of two point two density, for instance. Um, but in there it says like densities, and we have planning areas and all that. So does a max of two point two mean everybody can build up to two point two? Or is it, um, does that change by the statements of like density, rural character, similar densities to other neighborhoods in the zoning resolution?
I, I think every applica, and I say this frequently, I think every application has to rise and fall on zone merits, comes to you and the trustees with very, in very fact-specific scenarios. The comp plan is the guideline, the zoning code is the law. If a divergence can be, or a very, or variance, depending on what we're looking at, can be requested from the provisions of the zoning resur, resolution, should we strive to remain in compliance with our comp plan? Absolutely. Um, but to the extent you're asking me, is that an absolute cap? Each application is gonna have to rise and fall and, and you may, I guess I'll say it this way, there may come a, there, can I envision a scenario where you say, hey, we, we don't love that two point two one, but we really like the fifty-five percent open space? That'd be a, that'd be a conversation you'd be having in that moment.
So, if I may add to that.
So the way I see the comprehensive plan is, it's true value is in a couple of ways. A, you have to have it under statute in order to adopt the zoning. It's valuable for that. But B, to me, the comprehensive plan is most useful in a couple of facets. Number one, it's the rationalization you can use for a zoning decision. It can't be the reason you're making the zoning decision, but it can justify your decision. So it's most useful if someone comes to you and says, I want to rezone this property to commercial. If your comprehensive plan says, we want that to be residential, you can now say no because using the justification that our comprehensive plan says, no, we want that to be commercial. In that aspect, that's, in my opinion, a proper utilization of the plan. Similarly, with the specific density numbers. Your resolution says one, your comprehensive plan says, we'll allow you to go up to two point two, and someone asks for two point two, asking for a divergence, using the comp plan as a justification for that divergence. You can use it to justify your, support your decisions, but I would never take the, a statement in the plan and treat that as the law itself. Especially if it says, development shall be similar to neighboring developments. That is so vague and ambiguous, like you, not an enforceable standard. The other important distinction I want to make as far as the zoning code is concerned is, and I think there's some confusion here and I, I want to take the opportunity to clarify. I think sometimes I, I see people read section, like, I'm gonna use PRD nine oh one. It's, it's the intent and purpose section of the zoning resolution. Those aren't enforceable standards. That's not, it's the law because it's in the resolution, but it's sort of like a preamble or justification for why the following rules and all these other sections exist. So, if someone comes in and says, hey, I'm proposing a PRD, I comply with all nine oh two through all the other sections of the zoning code, you cannot argue that, well, yeah, that may be the case, but I don't think you're consistent with the, uh, neighboring developments, hence we're, I'm gonna deny you on the basis of section nine oh one oh one F. That, you, you, you can't be consistent with density, but then argue, because you're, you're, you have said, if you meet these standard, the intent, if you meet these standards, the legal, and again, I'm not an attorney, but Jennifer is gonna tell me if I'm wrong, the argument's gonna be, if someone meets all these standards, they have de facto met the intent and purpose of your zoning resolution. If you feel like the standards in your zoning resolution do not support the intent and purpose section of your zoning code, that's our problem to fix. We need to change the zoning code. So you can't say, we have these intent and purpose sections, you meet the zoning code, but, ah, I prefer the zoning, I, I just don't like this plan, so I'm gonna say it's not consistent with the neighboring development. That's just, they're, they're inconsistent statements from a zoning standpoint. They, they really can't coexist like that. So, I feel like I've heard that argument raised in the past in some of these hearings and I, I'm glad I have the opportunity to finally sort of, I think, provide clarity on that issue that. And the same goes if, say someone generally complies with section nine, but they're asking for some divergences, but there are divergences that are immaterial, you know, no one finds significant. In the same vein, you can't say, well, you, you comply with most stuff and regarding the divergence you're asking for, no one seems to have an issue with it. But, we still, you know, you can't use gotcha clauses. And that's really something, when I got here, I was really concerned about that this township had a lot of in a lot of its documents, was gotcha clauses. They were sort of, they were being used as bailouts of, well, they technically meet the law, but, you know, I really don't like it, so let's use this one sort of gotcha bailout clause that's sort of like really open-ended, that we're gonna use as sort of a parachute to, to bail out and get out of this and use as our reason to deny something. You, you don't want to operate that way, in my assessment. I, I think you get challenged on something like that. Again, not an attorney, but I, I've been in enough training seminars and listened to enough attorneys, I think you would probably not have a good time in court if that was your argument.
We know, and we have.
Jennifer's not disagreeing with me, so.
I haven't. Nope, but there's been no slaps or otherwise, or kicks.
It's just interesting that it said a maximum two point two, and it seemed like it was up to us to figure out what we thought was appropriate there. And so you're saying nine oh one, all those things mean nothing?
They, they don't mean nothing. I guess I'll explain it this way. I think nine oh one is the, is the why, and nine oh two through the end is the how, if that helps. Nine oh one, I mean, even if you just read it, I mean, I'm gonna go English major on y'all and say, nine oh one says, it is the policy of the township. So it's like, this is our spirit, this is our, our reason. Um, and nine oh one point oh two says, this section, I think that, well, I think that's referring to effectively this whole chapter, article, establishes standards. I mean, that's really like, hey, look to the next sec, the, the pre, the following sections to see what our standards and requirements are. Nine point oh one, and then this is true of almost every zoning code I've ever seen. They're structured this way. I suspect we probably borrowed it from county zoning codes, probably got structured this way. Also, it's a good, we have language like this to give, it's almost like legislative intent. So think of when a law is ambiguous in the future. Now, it's, it's not a get out of jail free card, it's not, I'm not saying, sitting here and saying, you're gonna win every case you ever get, get. But, this is a, this is the, like I said, the reason, the why, and when you want to point to, or the township would have to defend or point to, where's your, where do you, where do you come off going through nine oh two through whatever? You're gonna say, here's why, here's what we're doing here. Here was the aspiration and the goal behind the following sections. And the following sections are how we went about doing that. This dimension, this setback, this requirement.
Yeah, so if someone were ever to ask the question of, why is the density one point zero in, in PRD? Why is that your max density? You'd say, well, in section nine oh one dot oh one, we're saying we're promoting a more efficient use of land that is generally achieved through conventional development, resulting in substantial savings in utility street extensions, and promoting development patterns in harmony with land use density, those, those are the reasons. I often equate a lot of times when we talk about this stuff to like speed limits, because I feel like that's something a lot more people can understand, because density and zoning is so like ambiguous. The speedlet, you could say, well, the law is, the speed limit is twenty-five miles per hour. Section nine oh one oh one is telling you why it's twenty-five miles per hour, because we don't want people getting killed. That's, that, I mean, that's almost essentially what it's doing.
We've decided that this is the kind of road that needs twenty-five, not thirty-five, not fifty.
Yeah, that's.
That all says why we should get this done and get the numbers in.
But in the same vein of speed limits, the speed limit being twenty-five doesn't mean, well, that means that's the max you can do for feeling like it's a good day. That doesn't mean on other days we'd like to see, really, we're, we're looking for twenty-two or twenty. If you say it's twenty-five, it's twenty-five. And that's why I do the density numbers in the resolution. If you say it's two point two, that doesn't mean, if you say the right words, that maybe we'll let you go up to two point two. And historically, I think that's sometimes how this township operated, and I think frankly it was incorrect. No, what it means is, if you say two point two, you better be willing to give them two point two when they come in and ask for it, as long as they're meeting all the other standards. I mean, that's, that's how we need to, to view this. And I think that's the lens that we haven't always viewed it from, and that's what really I'm trying to correct here, and that's why we're making a lot of these changes. But, these changes aren't gonna make sense or aren't gonna work out if we don't understand that that's how it needs to be applied.
And, we did have a consent decree, and correct me if I'm wrong, counsel, that four judges looked over what happened in the area, so we do also have the legal rationale why we came up with these numbers. Because we couldn't arbitrarily pick numbers to put in there because we have to be able to defend these in a court of law. Is that not correct?
I don't know how.
That's what that said.
That consent decree went, I think the consent decree had to do with a particular property.
It did, but I think we learned from that, didn't we?
Sure, oh, of course.
It, it, it didn't say we forever in Genoa Township need to do it, but I think it was a learning process for us too, that we have to be able to defend the numbers that we propagate out, correct?
Absolutely. And that's the analysis that courts run. Had it not been a consent decree, had it been trial, right?
Right.
That they would have run, right? We would have been looking, wow, a, a little bit different because that was federal court, right? A little bit different than the arbitrary capricious unsubstantiated by a preponderance of the, you know, other than that 2506 chapter review, which is where your administrative opinion, your decision.
So we want to be careful that we don't ever get ourselves in that again.
Sure.
Well, the issue was, you know, it got passed, and then there was a referendum, and then the consent decree came from the same two trustees that passed in the first place. And then it went legal and didn't get passed because there is a Ohio law that says you can overturn a referendum, that the consent decree can overturn it, right?
Right.
And so the judge said, either get the law changed or get rid of your trustees. That's what the judge said. He didn't, he said it seems reasonable that, you know, these many houses, but he didn't really look into our township at all, I doubt, and look at the numbers and decide whether, you know, our zoning was appropriate for that area. He was just strictly talking about the consent decree itself.
Well, so that's because it was resolved under a consent decree, right? It got set, which is effectively a settlement. Had the court, and I wasn't involved in that case, but I'm aware of it, had the court reached a level where they took it to a trial, which they could have done, you would have had, I mean, in all my townships, I mean, I had, I mean, Jerome Township and Union County had five developers come out from in one federal case, two years ago, two years ago. So townships so far that I'm aware of have opted to settle, and a rule of thumb among lawyers is a settlement means no one's happy, but they've decided, listen, we don't, but, well, and we don't want to lose our, 90% of our lives for the next however many years it takes. So to get straight up guidance from a judge, federal or state, you would have to take it likely to some kind of trial or some kind of dispositive motion where they really fought to the death.
And then they would dive into.
And then you will have to see what, if you're happy with what they decide.
Yeah, I would say, would it be fair to say that when they judged that the settlement was fair, they didn't dive down, like, really did hard scrutiny on it? They just said, yeah, this doesn't seem egregious. And that's probably in the case where, like, they don't want someone agreeing to a settlement who maybe, it's so lopsided that it's just like, the judge has got to step in almost on behalf of that one party and be like, no, you got sort of, this isn't fair, like, for whatever reason, you agreed to something.
But this was fairly, I mean, it was fairly litigated. The court decided it was fairly litigated. Everyone had counsel, right? Everyone was sophisticated themselves and had teams of folks advising them. I like to think of it as a little bit, I have a younger sister, so it's like, if my sister and I came to my mom and said, we resolved our quarrel, you know, we figured, we saw the light, courts are generally going to be like, okay, you know, let's not hear any more about it. Courts like settlements. They encourage an efficient use of judicial resources, right? Trials cost money, and they don't only cost the parties money, they cost taxpayers money, because all that has to come from somewhere. Courts have busy dockets, there's potentially one of them, and, I mean, I used to work for a court, so I know that they will like triple book themselves trials in any given week, knowing, hoping that at least two of them get moved, you know what I mean? So they like settlements. So do I think, I agree with you, do I think that they, that their poor staff attorney poured through every piece of it? I don't, but did they think on its face, based on the representations of the parties, that it was reasonable? They did, and that's why they would have signed off on something like that.
But also to your point, it would have been specific just to that particular development. We don't want to extrapolate that out too far to.
Right, well, the good thing is, I mean, we're fixing it. Because what I consider very bogus, this whole zoning resolution not being compatible with the comprehensive plan, is only my opinion. And so I don't think that ever held any water, but that's in the past, it doesn't matter.
We'll see you at the legislature, right? You're going to be running for a seat soon.
Oh, no.
Wants to clean that up. I'd be more than happy to see it, trust me.
No, I, yeah, it's a, anyway, that is. Nobody stayed at a holiday. Little, you know, no, my point, my point being.
I like how you keep asking the same question over and over again, thinking a lawyer is going to tell you a different answer. So, that's okay.
What you said about, the judge did not delve into this. So a reasonable thing, that reasonable didn't mean, it meant, oh, we're glad that you parties decided. It didn't mean he dove into here and said, yeah, in planning area four, it's okay to have 1.78 or 7.6 or whatever it is. He just resolved that, so I'm just saying that. So bottom line is, I think, I think the way this is set up, the mechanics of it's great. And we are just, you know, head on to that discussion.
I think the way we've got it worded right now fits far better than what it has.
Oh, yeah, because it, and to these, all these people.
And the referings that we're looking for is there.
Yeah, and all these people that come up, they say it's confusing, it's changed, it's back to the other.
Absolutely.
That's what we're going to fix. And, you know, whether we go into point one here or there, it doesn't really, I mean, that'll be up for discussion and people and all that stuff.
I very much look forward to having a very clear definitive line in the sand.
Bet you do.
On the topic, so I can just answer the question.
So what I think we ought to do here is, we need to continue, we need to open the other one, so we've got it on. So.
Sure.
Does this need to be a continuance?
It needs to be a continuance, and we're continuing to the 27th of the month.
I would move to continue the public hearing for the subject Comprehensive Plan Amendment dated January 17, 2023, Zoning Commission Case Number 2023-02 until February 27 at 7:00 PM in the Genoa Township Hall.
A second.
Discussion, roll.
Roll call, Mr. Bennerick. Mr. Carter. Ms. Walsh. Mr. Welch. Mr. Leff.
Yes, that concludes this portion at 9:15. I will now open at 9:15 PM General Township Zoning Commission Initiated Zoning Resolution Amendment, zoning case 2023-03, reflecting and comply with provisions of the Ohio Revised Code, Article 1, revise certain definitions, Article 4, modify density regulations, Article 7, 9, and 14, increase certain minimum lot sizes, Article 8, and supplement divergent review standards, Article 27, along with various amendments related to such revisions for the purposes of consistency, clarity, accuracy, and proper administration. For those willing to speak on behalf of this case, please rise. These are the truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth, help you God. Thank you, be seated. Legal notice for this meeting was printed and published on February 1, 2023, in Delaware Gazette, posted in John Township Hall on January 24, 2023. The following will mark the exhibits A through F. A, the legal notice, B, the affidavit of advertisement, C, the sign-in sheet, D, the zoning text amendment dated January 17, 2023. The DCR PC recommendation will be discussed during the February 23 meeting. F, the staff's PowerPoint presentation presented February 15, 2023. G, all public comments received between January 17, 2023 and February 15, 2023. Mr. Schaefer, floor yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you could read disclaimers very well. On the radio if you ever needed to be. With that, so I'm going to, as you noted, exhibit F, the staff's PowerPoint presentation. I'm not going to go back through all the slides I just did. For the sake of brevity, you're all welcome. It will be entered into the record and public, anyone can access it. So I'm going to jump back into that PowerPoint presentation to talk about the zoning resolution, even though we touched on a lot of it during the prior hearing. So what we're doing in the zoning resolution amendment, just for the sake of the record, is we're going to amend the zoning resolution to be consistent with the items we're proposing in the Comprehensive Plan Amendment that was the hearing before this. In front of you, you have a table of the current zoning resolution standards for minimum lot size, as well as the current standards for existing density for the planned districts. And then on the right side, you have the proposals, the items that are highlighted represent the changes. So for the minimum lot size in suburban residential district, we're changing that from 20,000 square feet to 30,000 square feet. 20,000's been the number at the long time, but I also think we felt like there was a bit of a loophole in Planning Area 1 where, okay, well, I won't do a PRD, and if you do some of the math, you sort of find out that the lot size is pretty close to being the 20,000 square foot suburban residential. So someone doing the math may have been like, well, why would I go through all the huge PRD two-step public hearing process when I can just, I'll do no open space, and I will just carve this up into 20,000 square foot lots and call it a day? A lot of times they don't want to do that because they want the higher density, or they're trying to do condos where that doesn't work. But it was technically a scenario that could happen. So I think that's, was really the justification for the increase on the square footage, is we're trying to disincentivize that a little bit.
Creates place.
Yeah, mhm. And then with the PRDs, you can see, we're lowering the current PRD's maximum density standards is 1.8 without conservation development standards, 2.2 width. Lowering that down to 1.2 slash 1.25, again, to be consistent with the lowest numbers currently recommended in the comprehensive plan. Obviously, with the Hoover watershed overlay, the overlay does have densities within that article. This amendment would actually take those out and just defer to the max density in the underlying zoning district, which would be PRD. So when someone's wanting to do a development, and I know we had this discussion during the watershed, I'll rehash it real quick. The watershed overlay, it doesn't function, when you hear a lot of zoning training about overlays, they're talking about very, one type of overlay. Our overlay is not that type. We're like the other small percentage of them, where it's more like a floodplain overlay, where it's applicable regardless of what the underlying zoning district is. So no one's ever going to come in and necessarily say, I want to develop and I want to rezone this property to the HOD overlay. It already applies to them. The, what they would say is, hey, I want to come in and rezone to PRD, and we'd say, that's great. Not only do you have to live with the PRD regulations, but this Hoover watershed overlay also applies. So having two densities in there was redundant. We had two densities before because there was some displeasure with the densities that were happening in that Hoover watershed overlay area under the old PRD numbers. So we said, we're going to do this overlay and we're going to lower the numbers. But when we did that, we knew that was probably not going to be the permanent way things were going to be set up, because we knew we were going to circle back and then do this amendment, which is, here we are. So that's why the numbers are coming out of the Hoover watershed overlay. One, when I originally went through this process, I thought, well, we're just going to delete Hoover watershed overlay completely. It'll be just this anomaly that existed for six months in the zoning code and then was taken back out. And the more I thought about it, I was like, well, that doesn't make a lot of sense. We worked really hard on it, and there's a lot of good stuff in it that we were very happy with from a design standpoint. So I thought, well, we don't need to nuke the whole thing, we just need, we'll just take the densities out and we'll keep all the other stuff we like. So that's what you have proposed before you regarding that. And then I already sort of touched on the Planned Community Facilities District. There was no existing density max in the current zoning resolution. It's being proposed at 1.0, knowing, because that equals the lowest density for PRD in the comp plan, or in the comp plan, knowing that there's going to be PCFs in some of those areas that will allow to go a little higher than that. There's no changes, or obviously regarding plan commercial or plan industrial, because they don't have residential components, nor is there any other changes to any of the other straight zoning districts, the non-plan districts, rural residential, minimum lot size is remaining the same, community business, minimum lot size remaining the same, light industrial, minimum lot size remaining the same. We are making numerous other revisions during one of these discussions. Pete mentioned, maybe we ought to look at Article 1 and just take the opportunity to maybe tidy it up a little bit, make sure it's current with the revised code. And also, as I was reviewing it and looking through it, I always find, well, we could do this better, we could do this better. This could be a loophole that I didn't intend, so it's just some of those clarifications. Revising the net density definition, I saw what was in there, like, how we use it and how it was technically defined in there, I felt like wasn't 100% consistent, so I wanted to make sure I closed that all up, so no one could ever argue that we were improperly utilizing it. There's a lot of other really minor insignificant changes, spelling, grammar, punctuation, syntax, some word choice. Again, as I go through it, every time I go through it, I find like, well, I shouldn't have written it like that, I can do better than this. And so I fix it, and there we are. And then we're obviously updating the appendix in the back, which isn't really the zoning law, it's just sort of the history of zoning in Genoa Township, which is, you know, a very enlightening read, to say the least. So with that, pretty brief, the changes to the resolution are actually relatively minimum. A lot of the amendments we've done in the last several years have been omnibus, and there's been tons to review, but this is actually pretty concise. Oh, and I forgot to mention, we also added in the divergence review standard for the planned developments, the line that says, we are willing to grant, this isn't exactly how it reads, but essentially, a divergence review standard for density that it needs to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I will turn it back over to you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Public comment. One, twice, sold. Public comment closed. Any further discussion?
Well, I wanted to bring up a legal point, no, I'm just kidding. No, I think this is the framework we want to do, I think it's real straightforward. No, I think this is the framework we need, yeah. And this is, you know, if we change the numbers, we can change them. But I mean, this is the framework we need, I think this is what we need. This is what we're telling the public is our recommendation so far and everything, so I think the way it is is just fine.
I'm good. We've hashed this thing out quite a bit, so.
Mr. Chair, I would move to continue the public hearing for the subject zoning text amendment dated January 17, 2023, Zoning Commission Case Number 2023-03 until 7:00 PM on February 27, 2023, in the Genoa Township Hall.
Discussion, roll.
Roll call, Mr. Bennerick. Yes. Mr. Carter. Ms. Walsh. Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Leff.
Yes, all right, continuous motion passions, it is 9:24 PM. Other business?
Um, other business? The trustees are currently in the process of considering the annual appointments. They've got interviews scheduled with all the individuals that they have interest in interviewing. Just as a side note, those interviews happen starting at 4 o'clock on the 27th, so I will be in that meeting, and then I have to, at 7 o'clock, bounce over here. They're meeting over in the conference room on the other side of the building with those individuals, but it should end prior to 7, but just know that, for whatever reason, if the board decides they want to have some discussion, you may have to start without me, or I may be a couple of minutes late. Given that this is a continuance, and I've already put my information on the record, and you're really, I think that second meeting was really just another attempt to provide anyone, the public, who couldn't be here tonight, to offer public comments. I'm not sure necessarily me right there at the beginning of the meeting, and Mr. Benson will be here. You guys are pretty seasoned vets at these hearings, so I have full confidence. But I'll try to be here, obviously, as close to the start time as I can. I don't know when they're going to make a decision on employment, we've been operating one short here for a while. So they usually like to have it done sometime in March, so that way, when the term starts in April, we can give fair notice to the person that, hey, by the way, we're going to expect to see you in April, and have them join the commission. I did start taking a look at, you know, we have in our, the zoning commission's rules of procedure that it should at least be looked at annually, just to make sure. I did, and I haven't mentioned this even to the chair yet, I did start noodling some potential changes to it, just because, you know, whenever we go to OTA and end of January, the annual winter conference, I always walk away with some brilliant ideas, or we always think, that's something we probably need to address. I went to an excellent seminar regarding managing public meetings, specifically public comments, that Dave Ripponoff put on. And I came away with some stuff, yep, we probably need to do this, do that, add this, add that. And a lot of it stems from, you know, I'm sure you watch the news, some of the, you know, we do a really good job, and this group does a really good job of managing your meetings, and you know, yeah, they can get passionate, and we get a lot of people who are upset sometimes using microphones, but we've always done a really good job of staying on the right side of decorum and not violating people's free speech. I saw some examples in some that were played in videos during this training session that was clearly not on the right side. But there are some things, I think, in our rules procedure, we can tighten up regarding some of those. So I have worked on drafting those. I'll send them out, I was probably going to wait until the next iteration quote-unquote of the commission after April to do that. But if you want to see it in advance or know what I'm thinking, be happy to talk to any one of you about those issues. Regarding the March meeting, let's see, where's my schedule here? The deadline for the March meeting, the rezoning deadline was February 6th, we did not receive anything. The final development plan or Development Plan Amendment application deadline was the 13th, the other day. We did not receive anything. So as of right now, that agenda currently is just mirror Luna, because that was the date we had continued to. As you know, I've sent you out an email that said, mirror Luna has basically said, we're probably not going to be ready by March 13th, we're going to probably be asking for a continuance. So I will, and I never presume that the commission's going to honor such a request, even though we almost always do. It's not my decision. So the way, when I do like the email blast is, because people sometimes come to the meetings and get mad, and, you know, we'll have all these people come to the meetings and be like, well, if you told us they weren't even going to talk tonight, we wouldn't have bothered, you know, taking the time out of our evening to show up. So I'll probably put out in the email blast at the end of like the legal description, applicant has requested a continuance. I haven't done that yet, because technically speaking, they could rescind and try to get back on your agenda. So I'm waiting to make that official announcement here, not for another few days. But it is looking likely that, you know, there won't be actual discussion on it if the commission is agreement with that request, as long as that request stands, and we'll see it in April, or I guess whenever time they feel like they're going to be ready to bring it back forward in front of you. Other than that, I'm trying to think, I don't know if I really have any updates for you.
If we don't have mirror Luna to review or deal with in March, can we then go ahead and, whatever the commission's pleasure is with respect to the zoning resolution amendment?
Zoning resolution?
Yeah, I mean.
You could do that on March 13th, you theoretically could do that on February 27th.
Oh, okay.
If you were ready to do that.
Yeah, if we don't have any changes or anything.
Paul, am I right, we don't have anything else on March 13th? Because you.
No matter what, we've got to be here for the 13th, because we've got it, it's on the schedule, so. Even if we walk in and just do a continuance and there's nothing else, we still have to be here.
Yeah, that's true, you will have to meet on, you'll have to meet on the 13th at least, yeah, for that reason.
We have to be here.
Maybe a 10-minute meeting.
Yep, very well, maybe, so. All right, general public comment? Seeing none. Next meeting's February 27th, which is our special meeting on the comp plan and the zoning resolution here in Township Hall at 7:00 PM, March 13th, 7:00 PM, and potentially a March 20 sit walk if we get a request by the 21st, which would be interesting, so.
We haven't done one of those in a while.
We haven't done, uh, two years, maybe?
Yeah, now that we made it optional, we don't. Yeah, now that we made it optional, we don't seem to get as many questions.
The last one was.
Yeah.
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 Big walnut and Worthington Road.
Anybody got anything else? Go to the order.
I moved to adjourn the meeting at 9:30.
9:30.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Meeting now closed.